Good afternoon, council members. My name is Travis Green. I'm an attorney from Monroe with Helms, Robinson, and Lamb and Bennett. And I'm working now for the guys at Evoque at Indian Trail. And if this project looks familiar to any of you, it should. This is the third time, actually, that we've been in front of you in a developer meeting. The first two times, actually, I wasn't involved at that point. But Scott Bayer and John Ross were both here. And they were present at that meeting during the presentation. The reason that we're here a third time is we're hoping to get further feedback from you all, especially now that we're a little different composition than the last two times, to hopefully get something for this project that you guys feel that you've had a part in and that can be palatable to you for this particular area. The first thing I'll point out in terms of differences from this project, because that's really the reason we're here, is that we've modified things every time based on your suggestions and what your concerns were. Initially, this tract that we were purchasing was only going to be 21 acres with 320 units. And that density was about 16 dwellings per acre. What we've done since then, as we've gone, we've added the back portion that you see on your screen now. You can see it's an additional about seven and a half acre tract that brings the overall density down to 11. And with that tract, we're not adding any further units. We're just expanding the space that we're in. So I'll show you in just a minute. We've got a little bit different site plan now. Just to refresh your memory and for those that weren't here, this is the area that we're talking about. It's on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. It's behind Sun Valley Commons where the movie theater is. Currently, there's mobile homes and whatnot there. There's no commercial use or anything back there. It's a single-family residential. This is the most up-to-date site plan that we have. We'd like to be about the final. So you can see on my, I guess it's the left side of the screen, you can see the part that we added at the back there. It's all going to be green space, with the exception of the front part. We pushed, expanded out where the buildings are. So you can see there's a total of five apartment buildings with the amenity complex there in the center. And then, per recommendation at one of the meetings, there are now 40 garage spaces available to the tenants there as well. And just to add sort of a green energy part, we've got electric car charging stations that we're hoping to add in there as well. The entrance will be, there'll be two entrances, one off Wesley Chapel Stouts and one off of Bethel Lane there that you can see in the top section. This is a rendering of some of the outdoor space that we're hoping to have. You can see you've got pergolas and outdoor seating areas. This is the sort of survey/site plan, just to give you an idea again of where the current parcels are adjacent to it. Kind of covered that in the first section. Here's another rendering. This is outdoor, another outdoor seating area, sort of more of a lounge area with paved areas surrounded by gravel here. Since the last time we were here, or they were here, and since I've come on, we have had traffic impact analysis performed, and we also had a school study. The traffic impact analysis, you can see we ran it into a few different models here. They've got fairly minimal impact to Wesley Chapel Stouts and the surrounding areas. We're proposing to add left-hand turn lane. We'll have separate ingress and egress at the entrance so that hopefully there won't be any additional lag on Wesley Chapel Stouts. And we've also done a school study. And that school study projects that we would only actually add 12 school-aged children. Part of the reason for that is that we're marketing this for the younger crowd. It's not designed to be, you know, lots of families with lots of children in there. We're going to be marketing it. The amenities and all of that are designed for the younger generation that is not yet having lots of children, in part because we understand schools are a major concern to you guys. Here's another rendering, some more outdoor space, sort of on the side of the apartments here. And I'll stop on this slide for just a second. And you can see at the top, we've got what we're projecting for, the number of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments. Very relatively few of the three-bedroom, only 40 compared to 105-1 and 175-2. And again, that's to keep down on the number of school-aged children that would be here to keep it marketed towards the younger generation. And you can see the rents on there as well. One concern that was addressed, or that was made at a few of the other two meetings was about fire safety and emergency personnel being able to access this, since we are talking about a four-story. And we have reached out to local fire departments, and we've confirmed that will not be a concern. They can reach up to 105 feet, and in this, we're only talking about a maximum of 50 feet. So that hopefully will not be any type of concern, because obviously, safety's paramount to our client as well. This slide, we took some language from the current UDO. And just to sort of add credence to why we think this would be a great project for this particular spot. This is a spot that's directly up against commercial. It's retail, you know, movie theater. I frequent there myself, actually, when I go to the movie theater. And this property is going to actually have walking access. And I believe that we'll have that complex as well, their support in this, because they obviously want more customers for their retail space. And with walking access, you'll have less traffic. What this shows you is what this plan, the Village Center overlay, was designed to have. It was designed so that there would be more residents within a 10-minute walk of the Village Center. And this is about as close to the Village Center as we could get without being inside of it, without being in one of these commercial complexes. And what the UDO planned for was to have 6% to 10% of the residences within the Village Center be high-density, within a half-mile of the Village Center. And that's actually 12 to 15 dwelling units per acre. And in this case, we've actually got it down to right at 11. So these people are going to be able to walk to Publix, to the movie theater, to restaurants. That's the goal here. They're going to have access through to Sun Valley Commons. They're going to have access via sidewalks down the road, if that's their preferred route. So we feel this is exactly what the Village Center overlay was designed for, and we hope to be among the first to take advantage of it. And then, this slide actually doesn't have a whole lot to do with the Indian Trail, but it's just an example. So this is what the Promenade on Providence did. I know it's a little bit of a different scenario, but you can see here how they've got the retail center on the right, and they've got townhomes and apartments adjacent to it. And again, that's with the idea that these people can walk, or at max, in this case, have a short drive. It's a little bit different, because there's less traffic crossing that would be necessary from our standpoint, due to Sun Valley Commons be there. But this is just an example of kind of what we feel the Village Center overlay could I've got my clients, Scott Bayer and John Ross, here for any detailed questions, but I'm happy to take them myself. And I'm hoping that maybe we can get some feedback from whatever you guys may want to discuss to try to help us make this project better for the town of Indian Trail.
Yeah, I do. Thank you for coming, by the way. You said that based on the project, or based on the market, or the demographics you're going to try to attract or market to, you expect only 12-age schoolchildren. But there's no guarantee that somebody with kids cannot necessarily move in, right? You're not going to restrict them. It's just, that's just not your target market.
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you be the ones building this project? Or would you be, would you, or is there a possibility that you would sell the project for somebody else to build?
I think Scott may answer this a little bit better than I can.
We are building it for ourselves to keep.
To keep and own and maintain and so forth. All right. No, that's, these are the only two questions I had. Thank you.
Can you back up to the slide showing the layout of the property, right there?
That one?
Yes, sir. You said something about connectivity to Sun Valley Commons?
Yeah.
How do you propose that?
So there's going to be a walking path. Does this thing have a laser pointer on it?
Mr. Morris, if I may address that proposed pedestrian sidewalk right there. There we go.
That helps. Thank you.
We have that communication. Actually, a representative of the leasing entity of Sun Valley Commons is here, but we do have an agreement in kind to make that connection work to a bit of both parties.
That particular road right there, it's a very long one. How do you plan on mitigating high-speed travel, especially when you have a pedestrian crossing right there?
This one at the bottom there?
Yes, sir.
There'll be speed limit signs, and we can put, if necessary, appropriate speed bumps or whatever might be necessary, if that becomes an issue, or if that's an issue that the council feels we need to address.
It seems to be a concern in the town with particular long stretches. Brandon Oaks has a long stretch, and I just wanted to really point that out. Maybe they can mitigate that with speed humps or something. The other, and part of that question was, you know, once folks are getting off of Wesley Chapel Stouts, I see them accelerating right there, and then you've got your pedestrian crosswalk. Have you all considered anything like a pedestrian bridge perhaps across there?
I don't, I've no, we've not personally had discussions. I think that would be one of the areas where, if that became necessary, I think it could be done. I feel like with appropriate speed humps, with appropriate signs, even if security became necessary, I feel like we could prevent that from happening. I don't think that it would be necessary, but do you have anything to add to that?
If I may add, yes, one more thing. The on-street parking that we're proposing there also serves to mitigate the speed. That's been a very effective measure. We're slowing down traffic, is actually having cars park in parallel spaces adjacent. So yes, the parallel spaces, speed humps or speed tables in conjunction with some type of delineation or demarcation of pedestrian crossing would be our first events for speed.
You mentioned left-hand turn lanes.
Yes, sir.
I take it that that's a left-hand turn lane coming from Monroe Road towards 74 to turn in there?
Yes, sir.
How long would you, would it, how long would that lane need to be, considering, once in a while, when I'd actually cruise on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, it's just got a steady traffic. And that road is not planned to be widened. I think our CARPO representative could let us know for...
Could you please move to the microphone if you have comments? Please, thank you.
It says, yeah, 100 feet. We have a 100-page traffic study with recommendations. And we just took a little clip out here to try to, you know, just the general synopsis of what they said, but totally would want to make it correct and try to limit any traffic and try to help widen the road, a right turn in, a new lane, widen Wesley Chapel. And, you know, totally working with DOT as to what they're requiring, willing to do, whatever they recommend and whatever you would like.
So in other words, you would, we are not going to tell you how to build it. DOT owns the road, they'll tell you how, what the distance is and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, we have a full traffic study this thick, but just pull that a little. We don't overwhelm you with a bunch of statistics, but we have a full traffic study that said that it was a light impact to the area. And anything that was impacting, we would remediate by widening or putting turn lanes in. So trying to help as much as possible not to create any more traffic.
Thank you. Could you go back to the layout drawing one more time? Where you purchased that additional seven and a half acres, I believe, and the garages and the dog run areas there? What is that open space in the back?
We, there are a couple homes on the top that the current owner is renting. And, you know, we were going to, if it had any effect on the rezoning, we were going to either take them down, or if it didn't affect them, we would continue to rent them and use that as open space. It's beautiful open land there. And, you know, that was our intent. Just, we kind of just spread everything out here. We opened up the middle area there where the pool is. We made that big open space just to try to have a real green feel. Before, it was lots and lots of parking, and now we've done everything in our power. We didn't want to separate it too much. We have to make it convenient for the tenants to get to the shopping center, Publix and so forth. But we felt that, I mean, we bought the whole thing. We're in contract to buy the whole property, but really, we needed like three to four acres. But this is an area that we may put a soccer field or something of that nature, just something, open space, chairs, benches for people to relax. But, you know, we felt like this was a good layout, just opening up. If you remember the past, it was just really a lot of parking. So when we met with Mr. Morris, he thought that opening it up would be a good thing to show the council.
And I do appreciate you taking our feedback on a lot of these components. That would be a beautiful area there for a park of some sort, or as you just described.
We don't have any plans to develop it. We are willing to make it a park, you know, whatever. It's really land that, you know, just common area for the tenants to relax.
That's all the questions. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
How many units?
It's a total of 320, and it's going to be phased.
And I see over 100 of those were three-bedrooms?
Forty.
How many? How many two-bedroom?
170.
175 two-bedroom, 105 one-bedroom.
And you estimated, how many schoolchildren?
Twelve.
I'm not estimating.
Yeah, we, that was our, the school study.
It was listed in here somewhere.
Twelve.
Twelve.
There it is.
We have, we did hire a school consultant. It was hard to find him, but we did track one down. He supplied a report and...
That will be part of the application as well.
Well, having rented a three-bedroom apartment about 20 years ago, and the complex, it looks very similar to yours, 12 would be a very low number, especially for Union County being rated one of the top counties for schools now. That's just my humble opinion. So, especially if you've got almost half of them are two-bedroom and three-bedroom.
I'm relying on, you know, it's not like...
You might want to take another look at that. I think that's all I got.
Did you have something?
Yes. Which firm was this? Was this the one out of New Jersey?
He's out of New Jersey. I had been contacting Brandy several times, and I couldn't find the consultant. And finally, she gave me five names, and every one of them were out of business, or they could not, there was conflicts with the town and so forth. So I finally found one company that was willing to do it. And they're also doing another one for the town at the same time. He was thinking, maybe I was calling on the same project. And, but it wasn't. So there's another one coming in from this company up in New Jersey.
Even the firm that does it for Union County apparently no longer does it for this type of rezoning or anything.
Thank you. You're next, Mackenzie.
Thank you. My name is...
Mackenzie, one question before you start.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to let them know kind of what our feedback is after that summarizer?
Oh, you can send that over to Kathy, and she'll get that.
All right. Thank you.
Karen, to them.
All right. Okay, thanks. Sorry, Mackenzie.
Oh, it's okay. We actually have two slides to go through tonight. So the first one is Town Center North. And, let's see. Sorry about that. And this is the old Town Hall site. And it's 2.96 acres, a project located in the Indian Trail Downtown District overlay. We're in the very preliminary stages of doing a site plan, but we wanted to meet with you all to see your initial thoughts, if we were heading in a direction that you all felt like was a fit for the downtown. We are going for a town home project that would require a conditional zoning, and the goal would be to create an opportunity to live in downtown Indian Trail, a walkable neighborhood. If you see this site plan, it has the site outlined in the comprehensive plan. The concept that we have with the townhomes are 60 to 65 units with a 16-foot wide product. They're two-to-three bedroom, and they would be for sale or for rent. We are considering both options. They would be rear-loaded with one-car garages, and most units with full driveway plus the on-street parking. And this is a four-story, more urban product. And then, the garage and the entry on the first floor with the three floors of living space and a rooftop patio. Uh-oh, sorry. Okay. And this is an image of the three stories with the rooftop patio. That would be the same type of materials, the fiber cement and the brick and stone, and then attached units. Additional pictures. And these townhouses, you could actually go take a look at. They're in Charlotte. They're at the corner of South Boulevard and 277 where they meet, and they have a really pretty look. With the school data, the school capacity projected to improve or be maintained over the next eight years. Indian Trail Elementary, these are all the facts. Currently at the 92% capacity and projected to decline through 2027 to roughly 73% of capacity. Sun Valley Middle School currently at 100% capacity, projected to decline to roughly 86%. Sun Valley High School currently at 101% capacity, but projected to decline to roughly 70%, 76% of capacity. And then, the current enrollment figures, based on Union County Public Schools' capacity and forecast report. This was all from the May 2019. And then, the trend data through 2027, based on the 2017 study. And that is all that I have. Michael Theberg with Bowler is our engineer on the project, who did the initial concept plan. And again, we're in the very beginning stages, and just wanted to see feedback from you all, if we are headed in a direction that would be considered in the downtown area and would fit in the overlay, or if you had other ideas for what you would like to see.
Mr. Head, did you have any questions at this time? Or did you prefer to think about it and send an email?
Well, I guess I have a, the question I have, I guess, is more for Planning Department in terms of what else we have in the area, and how does this fit? My concern is that, you know, we want to have a mixed use of retail as well. And so, and I guess also, the new UDO and LDR, how does it fit in with that? Or do you have, do you know that at this point?
Councilmember Head, the projects that we're aware of and going through some sort of process with us is, of course, the Town Center, the 47 acres, which has mixed use. The apartments are under construction currently, and then it has the commercial component. The 203 South Indian Trail, which was the Italian restaurant site, was rezoned back in December, I believe. That project, other than that, we're not really aware of any other projects in the area immediately. And as far as the UDO, I think Bowler Engineering with this project has coordinated with staff a lot, understanding that we're in this, you know, kind of awkward phase. So they've been looking at both the existing UDO as well as the new draft UDO.
And this image is the new UDO, correct?
Yeah, Mike Bowler, this is the plan that's in the downtown district, like subsection of the comprehensive plan. It's like the original, I guess, vision for the area when that part of the comprehensive plan was adopted.
The downtown master plan.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and questions. So this is a three-acre site that you're proposing 65 units, which equates about 22 units per acre. Presently, there are townhomes already approved that haven't been built here in Indian Trail by the same company. It feels like this is a big land bank to me, that we're going to go try to approve this one. We already have like 41 units right down the road in Unionville Indian Trail at Plyler, but those haven't been built. And here we are, asking about 65 units on three acres. And as you mentioned, if you go down Charlotte, I-277, and I do that every single day. I didn't move out here to be Charlotte. This is Charlotte. And I just cannot, in good, I'm just going to be upfront. On the surface, this is something that I would be totally opposed to, the way it's presented right now. It's just massive amount of townhomes, four-story high, looks like Charlotte. We already have townhomes that have been approved and haven't been built. I think this is just a big rush, especially with the new UDO coming out. And I'm not aware of any other property here with 22 units per acre. And if I'm wrong, please, somebody correct me if that's happened here in Indian Trail. But that's just some feedback that I wanted to provide.
Mr. Barber?
My concern would be the traffic that's going to add to Indian Trail Road. It's horrible, as we already know, and there's just a lot there. And I think we're all hoping that one day, the extension over here will go through and relieve Indian Trail Road. But when that's going to happen, I don't know. And it's not, we don't get many answers, affirmative or good answers from the DOT about it. But I think when you're talking about, you're looking for something to, like people could walk to, my question is, what are they going to walk to if you don't have anything else there? So that's kind of what I would be thinking.
Happy to hear everyone else's comments, but Jeffrey, just to a couple of your points, I just wanted to kind of maybe help clarify. The photos, is it the materials that you're saying is just not, like, in line with maybe the vision for the downtown area? Is it, you've mentioned a couple of different things, just curious on...
Which one are you talking to? Me?
Mr. Morris.
Or Morris? Okay.
Sorry. You know, just, is it the feel? Is it the materials, you know, versus the color, versus the...
It's the sardine effect. It looks like it is just jammed in there. Again, when I go down to Charlotte, I see those massive high-rises. If that's what Indian Trail wants, okay. But I just know that when I ran for council, one of the things that I heard was this high-density development being disclosed in the tight spots. Again, right down the road, there's 41 townhomes that's sitting on 14, 16 acres, something like that. I don't know, maybe eight. I don't recall. But this is just really packed, and it's just too much, in my opinion. And I'm just one of five up here.
Sure.
I don't think that the, you know, the...
It wasn't the stop, it wasn't... It wasn't the style, it wasn't the style or the materials you're necessarily talking, just the width and that kind of thing.
It's the density.
Yeah.
It is just the density. I don't get too hung up on the, excuse me, the facade. I really don't.
Sure, no, that's why I just wanted to clarify, just to make sure we have the right, the full feedback or intent of it. The height, the height I did want to talk about, I mean, some of, some of what the comprehensive plan for the area talks about is more, is more heights? I mean, you know, in some, in the right areas where it's not impacting, you know, neighbors, where it's, in areas like, well, near the rail where it's not gonna impact anybody because it's the rail line. And that was kind of, the only reason that was proposed is kind of trying to go in line with what we kind of thought the comprehensive plan was saying for this downtown core. And if, but I just wanted to, that was the reason we've kind of gone in that direction, just for...
And it is good to have feedback of what y'all's vision is for the downtown area, if it is different than what the current plan or the UDO, the new UDO will be. I personally, I'm 25, I would, I think this is a really cool place to live where people can have ownership in a downtown. And it does kind of look like an apartment, but it allows for ownership versus renting one unit and you have the garage in each unit. But I hear what you're saying and we'll take all this into consideration. We are at the preliminary stages of coming up with a plan and want to hear y'all's feedback of what you would like to see on this site. It is the old Town Hall site. It is, there is a lot going on in Indian Trail in the downtown area and we want to see it thrive. There is a lot of retail currently there. So, bringing that, the townhome project would be adding to the mixed use. But we'll, we take all of your comments into consideration.
And that's what, that last piece was what I was gonna say, is in terms of what they were walking to was kind of that mixed use. Town Center, 68 percent across the street, you know, where there is the other different variety of commercial office uses.
You know what I'm talking about. You've seen other areas. I mean, I've seen these three-story townhomes like this in other areas. Personally, I wouldn't buy one having to get up and down. My wife would love it for me to lose weight, but, you know.
I understand.
But I know you're young, you would like it, yeah. But older people, especially I get my age, I don't walk up down those stairs, up and down. But anyway, but like you said, they are right on top of each other. But in my vision, I would like to see the road come across the railroad tracks, Old Monroe Road here and relieve Indian Trail Road. And then have more of a, like you're talking about, where you walk, where you have a mixed use. I envision more of a mixed use for downtown Indian Trail. If everybody just builds condos or townhomes, there's nothing to walk to. So, you know, that's just my thinking. But, you know, we haven't even approved or done a new UDO and I know you're operating off the old one, but I think most people in Indian Trail would probably envision that more for the downtown. More restaurants and different things. And everybody, you know, everybody says, we don't want any more fast food and, you know, different things like that. But that's just my thinking.
Sure.
I'm still not convinced that 12 children are gonna be the total that attend this, that live in the apartments. I just...
I think you're, we have not done a school study on that, this project for the townhomes. That study was for the apartments by Sun Valley and I'm not associated with that project.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
But in height too, you know, we've talked about this before, the fire trucks, if necessary, just, we don't have the capability with our vehicles that we have right now to go that high. Was it over four?
What's the proposed height for that, with the three stories?
As currently shown, which is for discussion, they're shown as four stories.
Okay.
But even that's still the same general height as what the apartment...
50 foot, roughly?
Which is 50 and they said they talked to the Indian Trail Fire and that was, they gave it to 105. So, it's half of the height, you know, that they...
Marcus?
No, I don't have anything. This is the, this is initial. I think Congress has given enough feedback, so...
All right. Mackenzie, you wanna start your second one?
Yes. The second project is also a townhome project, but different style. This one is called Uptown Trail Project. It's on 3.7 acre parcel. There are four cell units and the goal is to create a community that is compatible with the adjacent school while still in line with the downtown plan goals. This is the current plan.
Can you back up just for a moment?
Yes.
I'm trying to get my bearings.
Where it's at?
Yes, sir.
Opposite? Obeside.
Thank you. Yeah, and I see where it's at now.
And you can also see in this slide where the school is and where the site is in comparison. And we felt like the residential piece next to a school was better than the commercial piece next to the school. We did the, they're 22-foot wide units, two to three bedroom. They're for sale. They're front-loaded with one or two garage options. Most units would have a full driveway. This is a three-story product with the garage on the first floor and the, just the two levels of the living space. This is similar to the product that we did on Old Monroe Road, Park Meadows. And the facade would be very similar to Park Meadows, the same materials used. So, different than the first project, but all of the same school data is there. And I can go back to any slides, I went through that pretty quickly, but...
Mr. Head, did you wanna start off?
I don't have any. Could you go back one more slide?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right there. I'm just trying to absorb some of this information.
Would there be a fence around that stormwater where the kids couldn't get to it from the school? He's shaking his head yes.
I would assume so, yes. And he confirmed, yes, sir.
The, I look at the Education Street leading up to the school, just before you make that right turn, directly across, there seems to be an open lane. Does that mean that this, this would be connected to the school and the neighborhood? It's in different shades of gray. If you, let me point, let me point.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm really talking about this here. Would this be open and connected?
That's the, that's the current intent, yes.
So, from a logistic, from a logistics standpoint, with people coming onto that, because the school only has one entrance, right? If I'm not mistaken?
One entrance and one exit, that is a one-way. That is an exit only.
Yeah, so you kind of slide out, right? So, people using that to go into their, their building or their, you know, leaving from there to go to work and returning or going in there when school's either, you know, beginning or letting out. I'm sure that there's probably a car rider line there, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you've driven there.
Yeah, there is a car rider, rider lane that goes up to the front. If you put it back up.
This slide shows where the school is, so I think you can point on there where the car rider, or which one?
The picture that was just up there.
Oh, this one? Okay.
Yeah.
The road in front of the school actually comes out at Gribble Road all the way down.
School goes in through there, down further, down by, you know, Gribble Road, but Education Street where it comes out here, here's where the crossing guard is at the end of the day that people go. And they all can only flow that way.
It's only exit.
It is, yeah.
All right. I don't, it would be good to kind of socialize this with the school itself or the education, the Board of Education. Just from, from a logistics standpoint, not to interrupt or to even make the lines longer for some of the people.
Right.
I mean, that's just my suggestion on that.
Right. And we agree with that for both the school and for project, not causing...
I don't think the school would want that coming into there.
No.
I mean, if I, that would be my guess. I wouldn't have it go into that road.
Yeah, but I would say my suggestion would be to kind of socialize it with them and see what their feedback is because that, that way, when this is presented again, and I know this is initial, but when it's presented again, I guess that, that's one of the things that could be mentioned.
Sure.
Or, or kind of solved at that point, particular point.
Sure.
That's really all I have about that.
I have a question. What did you say earlier about the commercial versus this?
I said that contemplating commercial versus residential next to a school, residential may be a good barrier into the downtown instead of if commercial visitors all throughout the day. Versus the residential being a mediator between the school and then the downtown commercial retail. Is what I said. Did you have anything to speak on that?
Yeah, basically for the same point of making sure we properly manage traffic. It just seemed like while the downtown plan wanted to see commercial uses, that this spot, keeping the school traffic circulation in mind, didn't seem like the best spot to have that commercial use that would potentially cause more of a disruption. That was kind of part of the consideration.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
But in that spot, you've got houses behind it, houses to the right of it, and houses across the street, correct?
Yeah, that would also be then a disruption.
I'm very familiar with this.
All right. Mackenzie?
Yes.
Everybody, if they have any further questions, they'll email them.
I've got one other one, if you don't mind. Do daycares, are they considered institutional, commercial, or exactly what?
They're businesses, they're commercial.
Commercial?
But they have a different designation, don't they, Brandy? They're commercial education institution? They're privately owned.
Yeah, and why I'm kind of mentioning that, you know, you want some type of lease, the fabric of Indian Trail. You have this school right here and it's easy to put houses and townhomes and stuff like that, you know, in close proximity. Is there, have y'all considered something that would be more conducive to fit with the school in that area? And that's why I'm just kind of mentioning like a daycare, not necessarily that, but...
There's a daycare behind the pharmacy.
Yeah, exactly. So, anyways, thanks.
Things to ponder.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Think about it. And I have one other question on the other project. I know it's not up anymore. Could we pull that one up just to look at that site plan? Because talking about both on, I think adding commercial on the whole piece may be a challenge, but if there's a mixed use, if that would be something that y'all would be more open to, whether, if it was residential in the rear and maybe the road frontage, having a component of commercial? On... This one of where you see the numbers four and five on Indian Trail Road. I think that commercial there could be successful, but I think not on the road frontage may be a little difficult. But having a mixed use, we could maybe consider.
How about commercial for four and five, commercial on the bottom and then the floor above would be residential or something? I mean, that's another thing you could incorporate as well.
Like downtown Matthews a little bit?
Yeah, sort of, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, something of that, yeah, something of that nature.
We'll definitely consider that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanted me to start early? Go ahead. You wanted to call a closed session before the meeting?
Yeah.
It's in request, I know, I'll do it properly.
You wanna take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, yeah. I got the restroom.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Couple of us need to...
Then the meeting's gonna start on time anyway. Okay?
Thank y'all for your time.
Are we paused until 6:30, Mayor? Are we on break until 6:30?
Just pause until 6:30. Mr. Head?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move the closed session.
I have to open up an open session.
One second. Wait, wait, wait.
We have to open up the meeting and...
I gotcha. We can, I'll come back. I'd like to open this meeting up today, two minutes early and make, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Head's made the motion, all in favor?
Mayor, I'm sorry, but can we do a motion to amend the agenda first to put the closed session in front and then go on? Sorry about that.
I need a motion to amend the agenda for closed session.
So moved, so moved.
McIntyre made the motion, all in favor? Closed session's moved to the front. We've made the motion to go into closed session, which was made by Mr. Head. It's unanimous. So, we will...
We'll be back. Um, sorry. Thank you, everybody, for coming. For those of you who've just come, normally we open the meeting and we start discussing things. We're doing things a little different. There's something that we have to discuss in closed session, so we're gonna do that and then we come back out. In the meantime, we ask for your patience, okay? Thank you.
Ready?
Oh, I'm ready, just as soon as everybody sits down.
Ready?
Mics are live.
All right, I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
Thank you. McIntyre's made the motion to come out of closed session, all in favor? Okay. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for your patience in tonight's Indian Trail Town Council meeting at this time. Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silence? May be seated. Counsel, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Ms. House made the motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to presentations. Are the art display in the lobby downstairs? Who's making that presentation? Okay. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Patricia Dudley and...
If you could step up to the mic.
Hello, my name is Patricia Dudley and I'm an artist. And I originally come from Australia. I've been here since 94, actually in the Union, in the Union County area for the last two years. And I had the honor of being the first display in the, display downstairs. I don't know if anyone got to see it, but my art is very colorful and I will just show you a few little displays. I do pretty much any medium, but mostly acrylics or oils. This is on a tile, it's a wall hanging. I also do some plain air, painting out in the open. This was the Museum of the Wax Oars. of the Waxaw. So, um, I take commissions, and my work is at Eight Legs Gallery in Waxaw, and I also have work at the Novant in Matthews and at Mint Hill. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess, thank you for coming. Thanks for putting your art on display. I guess the next person we'll invite, let me see if I can get this name correct, Lorraine DeLuca. Hello, Lorraine.
Hello. Hello, Mayor.
You can take it, you can hold it.
I actually didn't want to take it down. I just wanted to put it lower.
You just want to break it.
Because I'm short and that kind of thing, but can you hear me? Okay. Hi, Mayor. Hello, Counsel. Great to be here. Um, I just want to thank you for selecting me to, uh, show my work, uh, at Indian Trail Town Hall. I'm very proud of that. Uh, I'm the director of MamaLucaMedia.com. My name is Lorraine DeLuca. I'm a Union County visual artist specializing in documenting life through a visually inspired communications strategy, through portraits, marketing materials, and special events. Locally, my work has been featured in the Charlotte Observer, Carolina Weekly Newspapers, Enquirer Journal, uh, Union Count, Union County Yellow Pages cover, if anyone has seen that. Uh, and also, if you dine at O'Charlie's Restaurant in Monroe in seventy-four, I was commissioned to do the photographs on the walls there. You can take a look there. Um, also, my clients include Canon. Hi, Shirley. Um, haven't seen you in a while. Um, I worked on a set in LA with Ron Howard. Anybody see The Andy Griffith Show? It's one of my favorite shows. You know Ron Howard? So I worked with him locally, uh, actually not locally, but in LA on a film set. I was the set, uh, still photographer, doing all the photographs for marketing purposes, for the posters, and anything having to do with the film. Uh, that was one of the highlights of my life. And locally here, uh, one of my clients is Atrium Healthcare, Wingate University, Union Symphony, Carolina Voices. I do all their shows, Union County Chamber of Commerce, where I received the Businesswoman of the Year, uh, Union County Education Foundation, and also the City of Monroe. I photographed the mayor and all the council people in Town Hall. You'll see their pictures. As a working actor, um, I can relate to both sides of the camera. I've been performing on stages in New York City and, and the off-Broadway hit Tony and Tina's Wedding, and, um, most recently at the storefront theater in Waxaw that, this past weekend. Wonderful theater. Um, I had several films screened at the Cannes Film Festival in France. Uh, I'm proud to have that done. Also, I was recently awarded Charlotte's Favorite Local Actress by Elevate Lifestyle, and I'm an active member of the Union County Arts and the Charlotte Film Community as an actor, writer, producer, and working presently on pilots and TV, uh, for feature films. Um, again, I'm honored and grateful to be here for our community, and if you ever need my help with anything, I'll be happy to help you in whatever you need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lorraine. That brings us to our new business welcome. First is TBH Skincare. Are you, are you here?
She's coming up.
Oh, oh, here she comes.
Yeah.
I'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself and your business.
Yes, I'm Tiffany, and, um, thank you for your time and the opportunity to introduce you to my new business. We recently just opened up in downtown Indian Trail. It's the little house that's green and blue. We're leasing it. Um, it's right across from the elementary school, and we offer facials and waxing and tinting. Um, we also are going to do organic peels and microderm and microchanneling. We have a lot of different services that we're hoping are new treatments and new things for the community. I brought y'all some menus, and I also invite you to follow us on social media.
Tiffany, if you come up here first, we'd like to welcome you on behalf of the town, on the town council.
Thank you very much.
Oh, God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey. Next up is Massage Envy. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, um, for having us here, um, tonight. Uh, I wanted to say, um, you know, we opened Massage Envy, uh, at the end of just last year, so we've just been open for a few months now at the Sun Valley Commons Shopping Center, right across from the Sun Valley, um, Theater. Uh, our basic goal is to help you keep your body working as well as your skin healthy, and the way we do that is we provide body care services as well as skincare services. Our body care services include a variety of massages, uh, you know, whether it's Swedish, whether neuromuscular, uh, lymphatic drainage. We also do hot stone massages, um, to help you with, uh, you know, relaxation as well as any problem areas that you have. We also do total body stretch, uh, services that are assisted stretch services, um, that are provided by our licensed massage therapists. We also provide skincare services with a variety of facials, uh, chemical peels and microderm infusions that are administered by licensed estheticians that are on staff. Um, so we look forward to definitely serving, uh, you know, here, all the, all the community, um, here in Indian Trail. We're very excited to be part of the town of Indian Trail, and we're also getting ready to launch, uh, a new service, um, next month, which is our acne facial series to help everybody, all individuals that suffer from acne, uh, help them get their skin healthier and build more self-confidence, um, you know, in what they do every day. So, um, thank you so much for having us here tonight, and, uh, you know, uh, we're glad to be part of the community. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. He'll pass it down.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Christmas Parade winners. Mr. Kramer? The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I hope you're all doing very well. Uh, as Mayor Alvarez said, um, we're here to recognize the Christmas Parade Award winners. Uh, as you know, the Christmas Parade was held, uh, traditionally and annually the first Sunday of December. Um, despite this backing up to the Thanksgiving holiday, uh, despite the rain and despite wind, uh, we had a, a record turnout, um, which I think is, you know, uh, truly shows that, that the community supports, uh, that the parades and the parade supports the community. Uh, the last three years, we've seen a steady increase for the number of participating or, organizations and entries. This year, nearly eighty groups, uh, entered the parade, which accounted for dozens of vehicles, hundreds of walkers, marching bands, floats, dogs, horses, uh, and many emergency vehicles. A special thank you to both the Lions Club and the Union West Rotary for assisting the parade. Uh, the Lions Club selected the winners tonight, uh, so congratulations to the winners and thank you for the Lions Club, uh, and then Rotary assists with the lineup each Christmas. The after festivities, uh, featured smores by the Boy Scouts, pictures with Santa Claus, holiday activities, our tree lighting, and grand marshal presentation. Farm Bureau of Indian Trail was again the sponsor of the parade this year, um, and again, uh, worked very closely, hand in hand with Union County Sheriff, uh, to make sure that the, the event went safely and securely for all. Uh, they're truly a great part of the, the town and the team. Truly, I believe a parade is a true, true reflection of a town's character. Businesses are signing up, they're paying their drivers, they're paying an entrance fee, uh, they're paying staff to come out on a Sunday. Um, likewise, the community's coming out to see them and show their appreciation. Uh, this year, four winners were selected. We will announce the winners, uh, and then if they can make their way to the front of the dais, we'll take a picture, and then you are free to leave, uh, or stay for the meeting. Uh, if you could help me in congratulating Special Olympics of Union County for Most Creative, Interstate Supplies and Services for Best Business, Providence City Church for the Most Use of Red and Green, and PAC Two Seventy-Six for Best Youth. Congratulations to the groups, and if you'd like to send your representatives to the front, we'll take a picture. Want to hear from PAC Two Seventy-Six? Let me say these gentlemen, you're welcome. Anyone else from the Boy Scout troop want to hop in a picture? Only two, perfect.
It's my husband.
There we go, Special Olympics. If you want to make your way front and center. You ready? Providence City Church? Perfect. Are you in there? It's perfect. Again, congratulations to all the winners, uh, and thank you, or the, to the community for another great parade.
At this time, I'm going to open up the public comments period. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that the meetings are recorded and can be heard on, by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask that audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comments period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or the council will reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to this, to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing a grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on the council with your concern. Respect your right to be heard as we respect, would ask you to respect our town employees' rights to a fair hearing of your grievance. Glenn Horn.
Mayor, Town Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm having some concerns with waste, uh, connections, misservicing. Your town staff has been very supportive in trying to get service, but Waste Connection does not respond. I've been two weeks without any service. Pam has been most courteous and helpful. I'm asking y'all to please intervene and help get service restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, what's your?
Yeah, before, before you leave, um, can we get your name and your address, please?
Yes, sir.
I have the address already.
We have it?
I have it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, somebody will contact you tomorrow and we'll answer that.
Pam has been very cooperative, but she can't get no response from the, uh, company.
All right.
Okay. Jonathan Baer?
Counsel, I was watching the news and it came to my attention about the suspension and the investigation of your town manager.
I'm sorry, today we are not going to be taking any, um, public comment regarding any staff, and I'm going to ask that you refrain from speaking, um, on this topic tonight. Thank you.
And as you know, back in January twenty-fourth of twenty-eighteen, this same person had maliciously.
You are already asked to stop speaking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Baer, he's been asked to stop speaking. We're not having this topic.
This is a violation of my civil rights.
It is a violation of personnel information.
I'm sorry, Mr. Baer.
As an American, as a veteran.
Malcolm.
Mr. Baer, you're going to have to stop. You're, you're going to cease your public comment, and you'll may have to leave the room if you don't cease right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public comments. Malcolm, you have an update, or was that just a written one?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Let's see, Captain James couldn't be here this evening. He's got a, a training conflict that was necessary and required his attendance and attention. One of those things that if you don't complete this, you don't get to be a cop anymore. We have a bunch of those. Um, I handed out before the meeting several copies of, uh, of, um, twenty-nineteen and twenty-eighteen, um, statistics and calls for service, both, both from nine-one-one initiated events as well as officer-initiated, um, officer-initiated, uh, activity. Um, I'll run through a summary of those things and then, um, uh, leave you to review the, the details at your leisure. Uh, total reports taken in twenty-nineteen was thirty-five-hundred. Total reports taken in twenty-eighteen was thirty-six forty-four, thus giving us, uh, um, the total reportable offenses were down a hundred and forty-four in one year's time. Calls for service, uh, increased by five-hundred-and-seven, um, in the same year time, up to fifteen-thousand-six-hundred, yeah, fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighteen calls for service. Total crashes, uh, investigated by the sheriff's office within the town limits, um, increased by ninety over the year, uh, bringing us to a fifteen-hundred crashes that we investigated. I don't have records on what the Highway Patrol investigated within the town. Self-initiated events by the officers increased by a thousand, up to thirty-thousand, event, uh, thirty-thousand-and-eight in twenty-nineteen. Total events, both calls for service directed by nine-one-one and self-initiated by the officers, an increase of fifteen-hundred in the year's time, uh, up to forty-five-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-six in, uh, in twenty-nineteen. That's the total increase in, uh, calls for service as well as self-initiated. Um, that's with a staff decrease of, of one officer from the, uh, twenty-eighteen budget. Trending, we've got breaking and entering, and lashing reports are trending downward from two thousand and eighteen, where, um, reportable assaults and drug offenses are, are ticking upward. We've got details of, uh, twenty-nineteen details and twenty-eighteen details in the packets I've provided. Um, if anybody missed one, please let me know and I'll give you mine. And that's all that I've got to, that's all I have to offer at the moment. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Would it, not, not right now, but would it be possible to know the difference in terms of the crashes we investigated, what, in twenty-eighteen versus twenty-nineteen? Where was, where did we see, or where did the sheriff's office investigate the most crashes in town?
Geographically, where?
Yeah, geographically. Like, for instance, let's say, is it seventy-four or is it Indian Trail Road? Where, where did you guys spend most of your time investigating crashes?
I will, uh.
You, you don't have to answer no. I mean, if you have.
Yeah, certainly. I can, I can tell you, I can tell you that it is on Highway seventy-four. And I could be mistaken on that, but I'll get the data and get you the specifics to, to back that up.
The, the reason, you kind of see why I'm asking that question. Okay. I want to be clear with my intentions. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
No, sir.
No, thank you. Thank you, Malcolm.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I take a? Mr. Mayor, may I take a moment to provide a little extra information regarding the public comment period quickly?
Yes, please do.
First of all, I did want to say that, as you said in the opening statement for public comment, we do have a process by which somebody can air a concern or grievance about a town staff member. That has not been done yet, and that is why those comments were shut down. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, so thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to public hearing. Number CPA 2019-0091-2823, Helmsville Road. Resolution number R20012803.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Our one public hearing for tonight is a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for the location at 3823 Helmsville Road. ZM 20, I'm sorry, CPA 2019-0091 is a request to amend the comprehensive plan from the current light industrial to mixed use. ZM 2019-0091 is a request to rezone 2.99 acres from single-family low-density SF1 to regional business district. The applicant is Ms. Jackie Profit, and the intent of the rezoning is to relocate an existing licensed massage therapy studio into the existing structure at this location. You'll see before you highlighted in the teal or light blue the property that's in question. I wanted to just also point out this small triangular piece as well, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. Here's a photo of the existing site looking across Helmsville Road. Here's the existing zoning that displays the SF1. The projector displays it a little more white, but it's beige in color, so that white area that you see before you is the SF1. The RBD is to the west, the dark purple, and then the light purple or pinkish on our maps to the east is light, the existing light industrial. So in regards to this triangular piece here that I mentioned, right here, staff encouraged Ms. Profit to reach out to this adjacent parcel to consider a dual request so that the small triangular-shaped lot would not be spot-zoned if this request were to be approved. It took some time to make contact with that property owner, and it was too late in the process for it to be included into the planning board packets. But we have received this application, and staff will process it based on the vote this evening. But we just wanted to be transparent with that request, that if this is approved, that triangular piece would come forward later so that it doesn't leave that white spot on the map. The future land use map, all of the dark purple you see is light industrial. The red is the mixed use for the dealership that's existing. So in summary, the rezoning request is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan by meeting goal number one, economic development. The comprehensive plan's future land use map request is consistent with the business commercial development occurring on adjacent property. And on November 19th, 2019, planning board did recommend denial of CPA and ZM 2019-0091. And then before you is the usual two-step process. There'll be one vote required for the CPA and one vote required for the zoning map amendment. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have a question for? No questions?
Well, I do have a question. Those five pieces of property, could you go back to that, please?
Absolutely.
So was, you wanted the triangle piece as well as this piece that's outlined in red to be zoned at the same time? And because of the process, you couldn't do that? Or the time?
Correct. We simply, Councilmember Morris, we simply encouraged the applicant when we looked at it from a planning perspective. We don't like to see little spots, just in the nature of how we're trained. Spot zoning is illegal in North Carolina, so we thought, okay, if this request goes forward, it's going to leave that little white piece triangular. So ideally, we'd like to see all of that RBD from 74 to a definitive line without having that small piece in the middle. So we encouraged the applicant to reach out to the property owner. It did take some time, so the timing is a little off.
So presently, everything is zoned SF1. That's in beige.
Correct.
Or beige on my screen here.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open up the public comments. Same rules apply. As I call your name, please step forward. Is that Barbara Hutch? Did I get that correct?
No. It's Butch.
Oh, sorry.
It's Butch. Hi, I'm standing here because that piece of property there, one of them, is my property. And I have an objection for this business to come in here. I've lived there since 2006. We get so much traffic already from Del Jarred Ford and from the small industrial part back there, and I live at 3813. I have a dog. I have nieces and nephews and grandbabies, and we walk up and down the road there. It would be a little different, I think, if she had, was going to be living in the house. But as I know of now, that she's not going to be living in the home. And also, the home, we've had no break-ins, no vandalism at all in this neighborhood until they started building that house. That house has had two break-ins, and my house has had one break-in since all this has started. And I know eventually, time's going to change, and probably that whole entire place will be small industrial or whatever. But right now, it's going to lower the house, my value and my home, if she puts her business in there. She's come to talk to me, and I've asked her to show me the proof where it wouldn't lower my house. My husband lived there, and he passed away. My son grew up there. I just don't want all this traffic and all this break-ins and all this change for her to have her business. If she wanted a business, I don't understand why she didn't have a business in her neighborhood instead of our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Larry Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilpeople. My name is Larry Miller, and I reside at 3908 Helmsville Road, Monroe, North Carolina. I am speaking on the issue of ZM and CPA 2019-0091, Helmsville, 3823 Helmsville Road. I am a native and lifetime resident of this area. My family has been property owners of up to 30 acres of property for over 70 years. I became a volunteer for the town of Indian Trail back in 1996. I am an original member of a town master plan and previous chair and co-chair of the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Board. The intent of the master plan was to allow business, industry, and homeowners to coexist apart from and with each other. In this particular situation, there would be co-mingling of properties with opposite uses. My question to the Planning Board members on November 19th, 2019, was, have you performed your due diligence? In other words, have you physically looked at the property, the existing property and location, and/or the proposed location of the property? Our property and my sister's property, which consists of 15-plus acres, is Zone BD. We have homes, and will continue to have them as residential parcels until we sell or until we die. The proposal by the town is not consistent with normal practices. You have six total parcels that are SF1, but you are only earmarking one for zoning change. And this is not a good business practice for the town. But I see now, since the last session, that triangular piece is being brought in. That's part of the issue that I'm bringing before you this evening. There should be no piecemealing of these properties. Under the UDO, first, will there be parking? Will there be signage, landscaping? And of course, sidewalks usually is required when a business such as this goes into a new area. And architectural design, would that be included? If you're going to change zoning, it should be for all parcels. This proposed change is located between several homes. I therefore request that ZM and CPA 2019-0091 at 3823 Helmsville Road be denied. Thank you for your listening ears in this matter.
Thank you. Katrina Miller.
I am Minister Katrina Miller. I reside at 3908 Helmsville Road. Good evening. The surrounding businesses produce goods and services that add value to the community, to our state, our nation, and even the world depending upon their distribution network. Examples are Republic Refrigeration, GHS Hospital Supply, Cardinal Box Company, Elite Cleaners, and Pediatric Boulevard. There have been and are several churches in that area, which is a testimonial that there is a godly presence over this territory. This includes our homes that are blessed and protected by God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Ghost. Our major concern is the possibility of illegal activity or the potential of illegal activity in a business where adults take their clothes off before strangers. Brazilian waxing is one of the operations that this business carries through. It includes some removal of hair in some very private places, and this was also listed on their website. This information has since been removed from the website when we opposed this during the Planning Board meetings. Just because a business changes its website doesn't mean the operation of the business will change in their process. The truth is, unless we all have X-ray vision, none of us will know what is going on in that house behind those four walls, behind closed doors, and those pool shades. An ungodly, or potentially ungodly, or illegal business will not be welcomed by us in our community. This territory and our homes belong to God, and an army of prayer warriors are ready and willing to pray any evil element out. It has been said, evil triumphs when good men and women do nothing. Good men and good women do something, deny the zoning change and amendment, which is not a part of a comprehensive use map. Thank you for your attention and your consideration, and be blessed.
Thank you. Lisa Page.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Page, and I'm currently the owner and live at 3817 Helmsville Road. That's the five-acre plot that's right adjacent to the plot that is in question. I also own the .83 acres, a little small cut-out square that currently has a little white rental home on it. So my father and I both own it, so we have a lot of interest in this ourselves. My dad is 81, and he was born and raised on this road. I'm 53 and was born and raised on this road. Our issues are, we just do not want a business right next door to our family. I have a grandson who's 11 that I have custody of. He lives with me at 3817 Helmsville Road. There's already been a lot of misdoings on the property that they were told not to do. The property's already graded. It's about, I would say, probably 90% finished on the inside. The buildings that were on the outside have been tore down. The septic tank has been disconnected and was backfilled. It was drained and was backfilled with bricks from one of the buildings. Just anything that you can imagine. There's trash heaps that they, piles that they have created and are actually putting trash from other jobs that the joint contractor is doing. He's putting that trash on top of this. Reason I know is it's in the same neighborhood. And I just want you to know that we're not just people coming up here just talking to you. We have more, our houses are a lot more than sticks and bricks. They're homes. And I want you to consider that. Your house is a home, I'm sure. Do you want a business moving in next door to you? Probably not. So I just ask that you please take everything that all of us have had to say about this, take it hard, please, and say no to this. For all of us, say no. Thank you. I wanted to give this to the lady. It's a petition that I have had signed by 11 members of the road. They are either homeowners, or they are tenants of homeowners that are there. So I hope that says something to you. That's 11 people that don't want to see this come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Vic Thomas? Vic Thomas? Okay. Brian Crump?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council. I've known Jackie Profit now for almost 10 years. I'm a former law enforcement, I'm a private investigator. I've had back problems for many years. I was facing a $75,000 neck surgery. I was referred to Ms. Profit by my doctor. Ms. Profit in her four or five months saved me $75,000. I've come here today to tell you that this is not a fly-by-night operation or massage parlor that you see outside of some bad place. It's just not. We see doctors' offices, we see dentist's offices, we see restaurants beside other houses. Growth is inevitable. It's going to happen sooner or later. My experience with Mrs. Profit has been absolutely nothing but professional. I know several NFL football players in Charlotte that visit Mrs. Profit. I know many MLB baseball players that visit Mrs. Profit. I actually called myself before I put my name on anything to the massage and licensing board. I'm actually licensed by the same entity in Raleigh as a private investigator. She's had zero complaints. None, zero. This is a business owner that's been here in Indian Trail, is just looking to relocate, that's all. She is a fine, upstanding citizen in this community, and in my opinion, I would put my name on Mrs. Profit, for whatever that's worth. She runs a very reputable business, something that we need in Indian Trail. Thank you for your time, then, ladies and gentlemen.
Chris Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Chris Stevenson. I am a real estate attorney. I've been practicing, actually, in Charlotte for about 18 years now. I've been a partner with Kirk Palmer in Thigfinn for the past 13- I've been a partner with Kirk Palmer and Thigfinn for the past thirteen years. I live down here closer to Indian Trail. I've known Miss Profit for about five years. In my profession, I spend many days, ten hours plus, behind the desk in front of a monitor and, uh, talking on the phone, probably like many other folks do. Not really a, a, a great environment from a health standpoint. Again, I met Jackie about five years ago. It's been nothing but a positive experience. She's a consummate professional, and, and that's one thing I just want to emphasize is that this is not a business for her, this is a profession for her. It's a, it's, it's something that she takes very seriously, and you can tell that every time that I've had a visit down there. She is of the utmost courtesy to me. She shows a lot of respect for me. I, I could probably find other therapists that are more convenient to me, but I, I haven't done that because it's, it's been a tremendous experience with her. Last year I had some issues with my back, and she's knowledgeable outside of just the massage therapy in terms of telling me about physical therapy, chiropractic things that I might have experienced. I did go to physical therapy in concert with, uh, with my experiences with Miss Profit, and I'm happy to say that I'm not having bad problems anymore. So in support of this, I think that she would be a very great addition to the Indian Trail community. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Sims?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I want to thank you first. I volunteered to speak on behalf of McKinney Massage, and as I understand, I just have a couple of minutes to do so. But first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. It's rewarding to me that despite everything that's happening in our lives and our community, our state, our country, we still have the opportunity to fight for the things that we believe in. For that, I truly am grateful. So how do I summarize what McKinney Massage does for me, and how can I squeeze that into a two-and-a-half minute presentation? What I'll tell you is this. I operate a rather large lawn and landscape business here in the Indian Trail area, literally about two miles down the road from here. I have thirty-two technicians, seventeen salespeople, two warehouse folks, one route planner, and three senior-level managers. The stress that comes with the responsibility to provide for those fifty-four people greatly depend on my ability to provide good, sound business decisions, endless supply of energy, coaching, mentoring, development, supplying the same dream and ideals that I hold truest to myself to those fifty-four people. Namely being, if you work hard enough, want something bad enough, work with integrity, then opportunities are truly endless, and so will be the people that follow you there. So you may ask, what in the world does this have to do with the question at hand? Well, the short answer is this. This establishment allows me to function at levels I can't function at without her treatment. McKinney allows me to de-stress and unwind after six consecutive twelve-hour days. It allows me to lift, carry, spray, treat, run, think, and physically perform to the daily tasks I'm required to by those fifty-four people, thus allowing me to impact them positively every single day. But more importantly than that, it allows me to play basketball with my fifteen-year-old son. It allows me to walk door-to-door with, for three miles with my daughter, selling Girl Scout cookies. By the way, they're four dollars a box. So it allows me to jog with my dogs on Saturday. It allows me to play a round of golf with friends and family. It allows me to do these things without medical assistance, without a prescribable medicine. Look, I know fully well, as I approach the second half of my life, at some point, both will be needed, but not yet. So I ask of you to grant this desire to move the current zoning restriction on the property so that Jackie can continue to provide for me, and I can continue to provide for those fifty-four people. Thank you.
Mike Lash?
My name is Mike Lash. I've known Jackie for probably thirty years. Her family and my family have been sort of intertwined for a long time. I met her at church, her family, Presbyterian Church. She and her family, we actually got to know each other before we had kids. And they started, her and her husband started, a ministry called Salt Ministry. It stands for Save a Life Today. They would go into neighborhoods, just go from porch to porch, talking to people in areas that I probably wouldn't be comfortable going in, but they did. And my phone just disappeared. Later on, we started having kids, and her and her husband did a, it's like Lamaze, it was similar to Lamaze, but they taught the class, and we participated in that. Greatly, greatly helpful. From there, we went on with our kids, and we homeschooled, and they homeschooled, so we had that in common as well. Did some of the same curriculum. Her kids and my kids would participate in different things together. Later on, her girls took ballet classes from my wife, and my wife is still teaching, and thinks she's teaching as we speak. But it's, it's been an interesting experience, having my life, my family, in conjunction with hers over this thirty-year period. She's before you today asking for a zoning request, and I just wanted to tell you what type of a person she is. She's very outstanding. She does everything to the best of her abilities, whether it be homeschool, or, or part of a ministry, or, or just her business, whatever it is, she does the best of her abilities to do it the best she can. She, um, she's very determined to make sure that she can do that, and I would like, she would be a great asset to Indian Trail. I would ask that you consider this zoning request for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that David Bust or David Bost?
Bost.
Mr. Bost.
Take your time.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. First time I've ever been to a town council meeting. Thank you, Mayor, members. Can y'all hear me? My name is David Bost, and I'm here tonight to show my support for Jackie Profit's rezoning request. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself and how it came to meet Jackie. I served in the Navy for eleven years out of high school. After the Navy, I worked almost thirty-one years for the railroad. Then in late two thousand and ten, I got my dream job as a federal agent with the Federal Railroad Administration in Little Rock, Arkansas. But that didn't last long because an old service issue popped up, and I had to go back, back to North Carolina. I sought out a doctor who was well, uh, who was well-versed in the problem I was having. At our first appointment, we discussed my medical issue. I'm sorry. The doctor advised me that the surgery, that surgery was the best solution, but after the surgery, the problem still existed, and with time, got worse. I was told that they were very sorry, but they couldn't do anything for my condition. I sought out a therapist and was lucky enough to meet Jackie. As some of you already know, Jackie is a massage therapist. At our first appointment, we discussed my medical issues and the failure of the surgeon to fix my problem. I will never forget what Jackie's first words were, or her last. I can't remember if they were first or last, but she says, "David, there is nothing I can do to make all that go away. But I promise you, I will give you my best effort to at least get you some relief." Jackie has been true to her word. That first appointment was almost eight years ago, and I have been seeing her every month or so ever since. What I'd like to tell you about is what a wonderful person and a devoted mother Jackie is. Like most mothers, Jackie always tells me about some milestone each child has achieved, a favorite meal she is going to cook for a birth, uh, favorite birthday. And about two years ago, she even took in one of her son's friends for a while, until the boy had, uh, got things reconciled with his mother. I can tell you that Jackie always puts her children first. I sometimes tell her to make a little time for herself.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
That's it.
I'm sorry.
Mark Mahoney?
Uh, Mayor? Yep. Sorry. Okay. Mayor, councilpeople, um, to the first lady that declared that her property value would go down, I find it ironic that Miss Profit should prove that her business will make her property value go down. It seems that since you already know this, that the value's going to go down, that the proof should be upon you to prove that. And to the minister, I find it presumptuous that you assume that illegal services will be conducted at Miss Profit's business. While you may think of Brazilian waxing as unethical, it most certainly is not illegal. Good evening. My name is Mark Mahoney. I own Collision Specialties in Indian Trail, and I've been here for twenty-four years, using word of mouth and furl only. My business does a little over a million dollars a year in Indian Trail, and as a business owner, it is important for me to see other businesses flourish so they can be productive as a business, to pay taxes, employ people, and add business value to our small community. Without boring you, I have always been one of those guys that races anything on wheels, in or out of the water. At fifty-seven years old, I have broken more bones than I care to remember. My muscles are sore, my body aches, and I regret not joining the debate team when I was younger because perhaps my body wouldn't hurt now. I have been going to McKinney Massage for about a year now. They are polite, professional, and my chiropractor has seen the improvement from the services I have received there. When I had rotator cuff surgery last year, my doctor told me to find a professional massage place that specializes in sports injuries. I'm here to tell you that allowing McKinney Massage to continue doing business in Indian Trail will do nothing but help our small business community. I would like to say something about Jackie herself, but this isn't about Jackie. We all know she's an upstanding person. This is about her business and bringing what she does for the Indian Trail, and I'm here to tell you that she's doing a good job. That's it.
Thank you. Tara Williamson?
Good evening. My name is Tara Williamson. I've been the property manager for four years where Miss Profit rents the offices upstairs for her business. I wanted to come here this evening just to help under, others understand the business from my perspective. I open the doors for business at ten in the morning and lock up at six in the evening. Her clientele have always been very professional. The environment is clean and quiet. I often find it difficult to rent our offices upstairs because she doesn't want a lot of traffic and noise while she's in session. I think it would be better for her to be on a quiet street without a lot of traffic and noise. It's disturbing for her every time a loud car drives by or people are coming in and out of our building. The business is not like the corner store, where public, uh, people are randomly coming and going. Uh, her clients schedule appointments with her, typically three a day is what she does. Uh, for instance, one PM, three PM, five PM throughout the day, Monday through Friday. I don't think her business would affect the residents in that area at all. Uh, it looks like all her clients would come in from the highway and not even drive past the other homes on that road. Is there any questions I can answer regarding? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Hunt? No? Okay. At this time, I'll close the public comments, and it falls back on council for motions or discussion.
Can we have Miss Profit? Ask her some questions?
Yeah. If she'd like to stand up, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Town Hall, and Community. Um, my name is Jackie Profit. I'm licensed massage therapist and business owner from McKinney Massage here in Indian Trail. Um, I've been waiting for this opportunity for, ever since November from the planning meeting, to be able to tell you who I am and about the licensed industry that I represent. Is it okay if I present?
You have the right.
Okay, awesome. Um, I live at fifty-five sixteen Goldcrest Drive here in Indian Trail, in a house my built, my parents built in nineteen seventy-three. I graduated from Piedmont High School. I married a local boy and had seven kids, and quit my job as a licensed cosmetologist to stay home with them. I homeschooled them and raised them very conservatively. My husband and I ended up in full-time ministry to Charlotte's worst low-income neighborhoods. We went door-to-door in Earl Village, Piedmont Quartz, and Dalton Village, starting Bible studies. We set up outdoor stages during the summers and brought in Christian artists to perform. We grilled hot dogs for the community, read Bible stories to the children, and did crafts with them. In colder weather, we rented out the local community center, hosted dinners, and handed out clothing that was donated. Grocery stores also donated hams and fresh fruit for us to pass out at our annual Christmas caroling event, where we led large groups of volunteers from churches all over through the streets, carrying candles and singing. And when warranted, we took individuals in to live with our family for rehabilitation, to get off drugs, and to learn life skills. This ten-year effort was financially funded by several individuals in the community, as well as three area churches. Sadly, our twenty-three-year-long marriage ended in a divorce, and ten years ago, I found myself trying to care for my seven kids alone. Six were still minors, while I waited for the courts to get involved. I ended up on government assistance, welfare, and I fed my kids with food stamps. I went there, but I wasn't going to stay there. So at forty-two years old, I found myself trying to decide what I wanted to be when I grew up. You know, there's a saying that if you do what you love, you'll never have to work a day in your life. So I looked deep within myself for passions. I'd always been very natural-minded concerning healthcare, growing herbs in my backyard, and doctoring my kids at home with remedies that I'd concoct. They'll still tell you the stories of the stuff I'd make them drink. But I had an inherent belief in the human body. It's always trying to heal itself, and sometimes it just needs a little nudge or boost. That's actually a God thing. He designed our bodies that way. Even people that don't believe in God will acknowledge that when they cut their finger, it forms a scab. That's a beautiful thing. Also knew that whatever I did as a new career would have to keep me very connected with my community and making a difference in people's lives. After much consideration, I applied for financial aid, took out a student loan, and with the help of my older children parenting my younger ones, I chose to go back to school for massage therapy. When I got to Southeastern Institute, the most prestigious school around for the industry, I found myself surrounded by predominantly eighteen-year-olds, fresh out of high school. I left the campus at the end of the day many times in tears. You see, I wasn't sure if I could memorize the two-hundred-and-six bones in the body or learn the names of six-hundred-and-thirty-nine muscles with all their actions, origins, and insertions. And almost daily, I was tested on functions within the human body, such as our parasympathetic and sympathetic nervous system, our vascular, fascial, digestive, and immune systems, as well as lots and lots of pathologies, and the indications and contraindications for massage therapy. I wasn't sure if I could keep up after being at home and changing diapers for twenty years. But when I graduated from Southeastern Institute, I did it with honors. Since then, I'd also like to mention that I've volunteered for the Ronald McDonald House Crisis Pregnancy Center and the Matthews Help Center. I was told at this meeting that we didn't do PowerPoint presentations, so I put a lot of work into binders that I just wanted to flip through and show you pictures of the house and different things related to that. I've got them for the community as well as you. Is that okay to pass out quickly? Anybody else wants a binder? We have a few more up here. Briefly, opening the binder, if everyone has one. Would you like a binder? Okay, all right. The first page is my diploma from Southeastern Institute. The second page is my North Carolina Board of Massage and Bodywork Therapy license. Notice that it reads "Bodywork Therapist" on that. Bodywork is the manipulation and realignment of the body's structure to promote health. This is medical-minded massage, not body rubs, and we do not work in massage parlors. North Carolina added this phrase to our license a few years ago to help people differentiate. This license is renewable every two years with 24 units of continuing education. This is my eighth year. The next page outlines licensing requirements for North Carolina, broken down by number of hours of in-depth study of topics such as anatomy, physiology, client assessment, infection control, and more. The following page is rules and regulations from the NC Board of Massage and Bodywork Therapy. It's 53, no, I'm sorry, it's 43 pages in length. So I decided to spare you both and my printer tonight, but the massage, but licensed massage therapists or MTs are very well regulated by our state. I printed this page outlining draping requirements. Draping is North Carolina law, and no one is ever naked in my studio. From here, just flipping through very quickly, I've included some of my course study continuing ed certificates. Some are in frames in my studio, others are stashed in folders from years past, but this first one is, again, bodywork. It's Elite Methods for Structural Bodywork of the Ankles, Knees, and Hips. I'm also certified in pre- and perinatal massage. I have, have to take an ethics course every time I reapply for my license. Hot stone therapy, Reiki, Thai massage, that's a modality that incorporates a lot of stretching into massage. This is very popular with my athletes. Aroma therapy for health professionals. Another bodywork certificate, and this one I just want to stop and talk for a minute about because it's very important here tonight. This is a certificate that's growing. This, you may have heard of Shiatsu, that's not what this is, but it's kind of similar as far as using the feet to massage. I don't do that, but I did take this class. It's a little different. It comes from us from Russia, not Asia. But it's gaining popularity because, I just need to tell you, when I was in school, when I was getting ready to graduate, the instructor stood in front of our class and in a very "oh, by the way" manner informed us that massage therapists have, on average, seven years to practice. And then we go on and we find another career because our bodies break down, and we can't handle it. We get carpal tunnel syndrome, we get arthritis in our hands and fingers, we get repetitive motion syndromes. And, you know, he just kind of threw that out at the end of school. And so I look around me to see how other people are responding to this, because I wasn't planning to go back to school for anything else. But of course, the 18-year-olds didn't really care. They were just like, "Yeah," you know? So I took the rest of that class that day thinking about this and thinking, "How do I, I've got a student loan now, I've got kids at home, how do I extend this?" And I decided then and there that would keep my business small and individualized, taking two or three clients a day, putting a half hour between them each. So as these 18-year-olds went to work for the massage therapy, I mean, I'll just say the chain places that are around that do some great work as well, those people are often required to do eight massages a day with 10 minutes in between, and I know because I've interviewed those girls. And they do get burned out, and they do have repetitive motion injuries. But after eight years, I don't have any, and that's why I do what I do, the way I do it. So that speaks to the traffic in this neighborhood. There is absolutely no traffic. My neighbors may have more friends come over during the day than I have clients. This is a two-bedroom house that we took over. I want to speak to the waxing, my esthetician. I know two of the places that y'all allowed to announce their businesses here, the TBH Skincare with Tiffany talked about, and also Mrs. Patel. She has a licensed esthetician. Both of them spoke of waxing. Here in Indian Trail, there's nothing illegal or immoral about waxing. But I'm unsure if my esthetician will follow me here or not. She may continue to rent space in one of my rooms because this business is so small. She is licensed also in North and South Carolina, so we do run a very tight ship I wanted to go over the zoning situation with the neighborhood here. That's also very important to me. I guess, reaching back to the binder for just a moment, the last course certificate in there is PTSD. It's one of my most recent ones. It's caring for the afflicted and addicted clients, and that stays very close to my heart, has always remained that way. The next page is American Massage Therapy Association that I'm a member of. They provide liability insurance. The next page is my client intake form that's required by law. It covers medical indications, medical history, and a consent form on there. So I hope you get the feel of what my business is about tonight. So I brought a board to go over the property zoning. If, Brandy, if you would prefer to use PowerPoint, that's fine. I made some notes about your...
Brandy, these presentations are limited to 10 minutes.
Oh, I was unaware.
By council.
How many more minutes do I have?
Oh, you're over already.
I'm over 10.
But we're gonna leave you up there for questions from the council.
Okay, that's totally fine. Okay, I wanted to respond to some of the neighborhood concerns. Can I just respond to one?
Mr. Head, do you have any questions for her?
No, it doesn't.
No?
I do. This map right here?
Yes, sir.
What does that star represent?
That star represents, I just wanted to get it right. I don't know where I wrote that down, because I didn't go through my whole thing with you guys, but it represents, I know where it is, but the name is, it's the name of a business that has lots of therapists there. There are like non-occupational therapists. There's four physical therapists and three speech therapists or something like that. Don't quote me on that, but many, many therapists right down the street from where I will be also doing work. We're all licensed, we're all trained, and recertified, and have continuing ed and all that kind of thing. And that's right next to Mrs. Page's, well, just right down the street from that. So I was looking forward to walking you guys through the neighborhood, but I understand we're limited to a time.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I do. Where do you presently live?
I live off of Lawyer's Road in Golden Acres.
And are you allowed to open your massage therapy there? Are you allowed to run it there, at that location?
I, I wouldn't know. I've never checked into that. I know that there's no commercial or business. I'm in a developed neighborhood with no other businesses like this. We have all to the left is RBD, all to the right is light industrial. There's just this tiny plot left. And honestly, the whole RBD, which I was gonna walk you through, from my property over, actually across, all the SF1 across the street and all the way over to Independence is all currently for sale. All the Millers land is for sale. They just signed a new contract last month with the realtor to relist it again. I'm not sure what the problem is here. They're obviously not planning to even stay on Helmsville Road. But the SF1 across the street from me, I talked with them. The only reason they haven't rezoned is because they're using it as farmland because of taxes, but all that will be rezoned as well. So that leaves us with these three little plots left besides mine, and Mr. Mendoza, who has also got his application in for town hall to rezone.
Where is your business presently located?
It is across from Walmart on Unionville Indian Trail Road. There's a big secure care business park, two stories, and I have, I maintain the whole upstairs, or have until recently. I've started letting go of those offices. I've been there for eight years.
I guess my, my next comment.
Do you want anybody to ask questions before you have the comment?
Sure, let's do that.
Okay. Barbara, do you have a question?
The property you're wanting rezoned here, do you own this property?
I do. It was a cash purchase.
When you bought it, did you know it wasn't zoned for business?
I did, but we looked at all the zoning around it, and this property, this whole SF1 was pre-planned in 2013 to become, I don't know the exact, industrial? Light industrial? So the fact that RBD touches it continuously, all the way down the left-hand side, and then the light industrial comes around the back of it, it just seemed like a no-brainer.
But this particular property is not zoned for business, right?
Yes, sir. It was pre-zoned or pre-planned in 2013 to become that, but it was not currently zoned that way. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Howe.
Thank you. I'm a little confused. You sound like a very interesting woman and aggressive and business, and I'm sure your children are very proud of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Howe.
But the other problem is, you know, property rights too, and this is a tough call. I'm gonna be very honest with you, because I expected a little different background as far as how many customers you have coming in a day, and you're done just to two or three a day.
Correct.
And there's probably more people walking their dogs up and down the street than...
That's correct as well, yes.
I want to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre? I have a question. You said this was pre-planned to be rezoned. Where'd you get that information?
From town hall.
Brandy, do you want to speak on that for two minutes, please? Please clarify.
Mayor, I think it's just a difference in wording. So this is the future land use map that we discussed previously. All of the purple is designated for future land use as light industrial. The future land use zoning map calls out this area, as you see on the screen in purple, as light industrial. The current zoning is SF1, but the comp plan calls for it to be light industrial.
Question for Brandy. Anybody? Before I let her go? No. Thank you, Brandy. Counsel, are there any other questions?
I, actually, yeah, if you don't mind. Ms. Profit is here putting this application through, and I know we have a 10 limit time, and I do want to stay within that, but she asked if she could rebut something that was mentioned, and I think in fairness to her, I'd like to give her the opportunity to rebut whatever it is she felt she needed to correct the record for. That way she has that opportunity to present that. I'm not saying that we give her 20 minutes. That's not what I'm saying, but she did ask if she could rebut a particular point, and I think we should probably give her that opportunity.
I'll give you two minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. This land has gone through, just this whole neighborhood, tremendous changes. The Millers sold off everything this way, the Helms sold off everything its way, there's just this tiny parcel left. And I wanted to speak to, walking down the Ford dealership side, you hear this blaring warning all the time, every time a raccoon runs across at night, anything. It says, you know, "You're trespassing, the police have been called, you're on surveillance." This is not an ideal residential situation any longer. And the break-ins that was mentioned, Mrs. Page has rental properties, two behind her house on SF1 that have recently been investigated for low housing standards. And when we were first in, when we first started working on this house, this is what I wanted to speak to, was the break-ins. Our place was broken in, our tools were stolen, and I mentioned it to Lisa's husband, David Page, and he called me later and said, "We've got them, they've got them." And I said, "What do you mean, they've got them?" He said, "It was our rental house down the street. I came home and it was surrounded with police officers," and, you know, and then they had to evict them after that. And I just pulled up this gentleman's rap sheet off online, which is very easily accessible to anyone, and, you know, it's very long, everything from assault and battery to trespassing to communicating threats, possession of drug paraphernalia. So I don't understand how my, with us buying a house and there being break-ins now, how that could possibly be on us. And I just hope that Mrs. Page in the future will better screen her rental house applicants for the businesses around and the residents that are still there.
Thank you. Mr. Morse, you have a comment?
Yeah. You know, we heard a couple of other massage therapists and other businesses here tonight, and, you know, their locations of their businesses are more traditional, they're in business parks or commercial areas. What you have here is five homes, and these are still residential homes. This is where people's children live, play, and regardless of the caliber of people that may rent a house or whatever, I just think that in this situation, that it's not appropriate to bring a business in, even if it's a two-bedroom. I heard something about renting space to the second bedroom to someone else to conduct business, and I just don't believe it's fair to existing neighbors or adjoining property owners that that's their homes for a business to be inserted in between. I think that you have a better, I would provide more support if the, what I, the triangle was also part of this, because it's adjoining, but, you know, just for now, I don't think this is a...
Brandy, is the triangle part of this? Oh, it's to come at a future meeting?
But it has not gone to planning board at this time. We didn't want to put it through the process without knowing the results of this vote tonight.
Thank you for clarification.
And also with that, the, you know, the planning board, they heard this case, it was a 4-1. I know we don't necessarily follow the planning board, but we do put quite some importance on the recommendations. So I would, I can, I won't support this as it's presently presented.
Councilman Morse, may I respond to that? Okay. There are two homeowners that own land in that part still. Everything else is either for sale or being rezoned in this neighborhood, and the neighbors to my left have signed a paper that live there. They rent, and they live there, and they're just wonderful people, and they've signed a paper saying that they are in agreement with me to rezone. Mr. Mendoza, that owns that triangle of land, has signed the same paper that it is, you know, that he's good with me rezoning, as well as Mr. Quentin Miller, the Millers nephew down the street, has also signed a paper saying that, you know, he's in agreement for that. So I just wanted to add that to what, and I respect your opinion on what you're saying tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, there's been a lot of information for you to digest. Are you prepared to make a decision? No arguments, so will you want to put up motions for, that they have to make?
Is it okay if I pass this paper?
Okay. Counsel, this is in your hand. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt a statement of consistency as not consistent, as read by staff.
You require a reason why is it not consistent? Am I reading that correctly, Karen? That's just state a reason why it's not consistent.
Then I'll hold off on one, and I'll go to two.
One has to go before two.
I won't, I won't make a motion, then I'll number one.
Okay.
So you've withdrawn that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Any motions? Counsel, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt a statement of consistency, not consistent, due to the reason that is currently not zoned for business.
Acceptable. Mr. Barber's made the motion that it's not consistent, that it's not currently zoned for such business use. All right. All in favor of not consistent? Raise your hand. That looks like that's unanimous. We don't need a number two then, do we?
You do.
We do?
Yeah, we need to deny.
Okay. I need no motion for approve or deny.
I'd like to make the motion to deny.
Mr. Morse has made a motion to deny. Mr. Morse has made a motion to deny. All in favor. That two is unanimous. Motion to rezon denied. Uh, Brandy, at such time, for Ms. Profit, at such time that the other lands become rezoned, can she bring this back before council?
The current application we have was contingent on her request, so that that will, we will inform the applicant, and they would most likely withdraw.
Okay. No, I mean, the surrounding parcels, the other four homes, five homes, as with the future land use, if they become rezoned, light industrial, or they sell and requests come in, will she have the opportunity to present before council again?
She, she can request after a year to rezone again, but there wouldn't be any condition that she would go with others if they come. That's, that would be their prerogative if they wanted to submit an application, but she does have one year before she can apply again.
So, if, if these properties do sell or get, their use becomes light industrial prior to a year, is it, does the council have the authority to invite Ms. Profit? It has to go for you, no matter what?
Pursuant to the state, or to our town ordinance, it's a 12-month, a 12-month...
So, it's 12 months?
12 months.
Yep. Mr. Nyland.
Yes.
Mr. Nyland. Patrick Nyland.
Ah, right.
Yeah.
Mr. Nyland, you're up. Nyland.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Patrick Nyland. I am the Assistant County Manager for Union County. One of my responsibilities is being the liaison to the volunteer fire departments. I've been with the county for about 10 months now. Prior to that, I was the town manager for the town of Wingate for eight years, so I've been on both the municipal and the county side of this fire funding. I just want to talk briefly about how fire service is funded in Union County currently. Right now, we have two different ways that fire departments are funded. There are fee districts and there are tax districts. Fee districts are capped at $100 for residential property and $200 for commercial property. There's some other designations for farmland and that sort of thing, but essentially it's $100 or $200. About five or six years ago, that money stopped being enough to fund rural fire departments. At that time, the Board of County Commissioners decided to subsidize those departments with general fund dollars. In the West, most fire departments are funded with tax districts, and there's two ways to form a tax district. There are Article 153 tax districts and Chapter 69 tax districts. Chapter 69 are established by a vote of the people. It was a referendum at some point, and the voters approved those tax districts. Article 153 are established by the Board of County Commissioners. I just wanted to kind of lay that foundation because we are one of two counties left in North Carolina that still use tax districts. Brunswick County is the other one. They are just, they are no longer, excuse me, fee, fire fee districts. We are one of two counties that still have fire fee districts. So, in March 2019, the board made a determination that an 80/20 model was a preferred model, and what that means is that they were going to move everyone to a tax district, every fire department in Union County. 80% of the budget would come out of the district, 20% would come from a county-wide subsidy. In the past, the tax districts have not received a county subsidy. Hemby Bridge, for example, 100% of their budget would come out of their district. So, this was a way for the county to fund in addition to what the district would be able to provide. The management team was new. Mark was new in his position. I was new in my position. So, from April to September of 2019, we met with the VFDs to talk about funding, to talk about their long-term capital needs, and just get a better idea of their operations. September through October, we worked with Budget, Tax, and Finance to come up with projections on what these tax rates would be if they were put in place. November 2019, there was a final presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, and at that time, the Board of County Commissioners adopted what we're calling the urban-rural model, and I'll get into what that is here in a second. Moving forward, the final presentation was on November 18, 2019. In order to establish a tax district that has a municipality in it, we need to get municipal approval to do so. So, Indian Trail, Fairview, Wesley Chapel, Marshville, Lake Park, Hemby Bridge, Stallings, Unionville, and Wingate will need to pass resolutions. There are three, in yellow up there, Fairview, Unionville, and Wingate have done so. We've met with the town of Stallings twice. We've met with the town of Marshville. I'm on board meetings for Hemby Bridge, Lake Park, and Wesley Chapel in the next few weeks. The Board of Commissioners, after we get municipal approval, has to go through a process laid out in the general statutes. There are a series of notifications. There's a series of reports that have to be generated. Once that's done, they hold a public hearing. Once the public hearing is conducted, they can actually establish these tax districts. The goal is to have these in place July 1, 2020. Union County is, or Indian Trail is unique in the sense that it's got seven different fire service areas that support its residents, and I'm going to go through the maps here. I actually have the maps here. A little bit hard to bring you on the slides, but I provide copies that you can find for you. So, the three you have on the screen right now are the Providence Rural Fire District, the Hemby Bridge Fire District, and the Stallings Fire District. Providence used to be a much larger district, and when the town of Weddington decided to start providing fire service on their own, it was severely reduced. So, you can see the three areas, four areas rather, on the Providence Rural. One section is in the town of Stallings, one section's in Indian Trail, and then two sections are in unincorporated Union County. Hemby Bridge Fire District, which is one of two districts where the majority of Indian Trail lies, but they also have Hemby Bridge, Lake Park, Stallings, Fairview, and a little bit, actually, Unionville's and Bakers. Stallings is the other main district that supports fire for Indian Trail. In addition to Indian Trail, they support fire for Stallings as well. There is a very small part of Indian Trail in Fairview. I think it's on Howie, Howie Bottom Road, and then there's a very, very small part of Indian Trail in the Unionville Fire District. Both of these are fee districts currently. Wesley Chapel does have a small part of Indian Trail as well. Wesley Chapel is not changing. They were already established with the existing district lines, so that is not part of these resolutions that are in front of you. Hemby Bridge is a Chapter 69, so it was a vote of the people, and when that was done, Johnny's at four miles, you could go out, so you were able to tax within four miles of this, is it the station?
Yes.
So, there are parcels that are located in the northern and eastern part of the Hemby Bridge Fire District that are not paying a fee or a tax right now. You literally have neighbors living next to each other where one is paying the tax and one is not paying anything. One of the reasons for these resolutions is to clean that up. Because it's a Chapter 69, it was a vote of the people, the county cannot do anything to extend that district. What we will have to do is overlay a Chapter 150, or an Article 153 district to be able to pick up those property owners. This is a blow-up of those areas. Again, it's in the very northern part up toward Old Sycamore and in the very eastern part of the Hemby Bridge Fire District. Okay. The urban-rural model. When we sat down and started looking at district values, it became pretty clear that there was a divide between what we're calling urban districts and rural districts. If you look on the screen, there are departments at the top in yellow. Those are what we are going to determine are urban districts. They have a higher property value. They have a different level of fire service required. Most of those departments in the next couple of years are going to move to full-time people. Moving down, starting with Unionville, you get into the more rural Union County. You start getting a lot of farmland in those, in those districts, and farmland is not taxed at full value. These districts also don't have a great deal of water and sewer, so they have not seen the growth and development that the Western towns and districts have seen. So, what the board has decided to do is for the urban districts, we are going to go with that 80/20 model. 80% of the district's budget, department's budget will come out of district, 20% will come from a county-wide subsidy. For the rural departments, it's going to be 60% that comes out of their district and 40% that comes from a county-wide subsidy. The intent of that was to reduce some of the taxes in these more rural districts. We were looking at tax rates of 12, 13, 14 cents in some of these, these rural districts. That in comparison to the 3, 4, 5 you see on the east, or on the west, it just, the Board of Commissioners said they wanted to try to do a little bit more for the rural departments because of the lack of growth and the abundance of farmland in those districts. What does this do? Indian Trail is currently in seven fire service areas that have different funding models. This would, this would put everyone under a tax district. Stallings, Hemby Bridge, Wesley Chapel, Providence, and Bakers would be considered urban districts. Unionville and Fairview would be considered rural districts. As I mentioned, Hemby Bridge has citizens in the fire district that aren't paying any tax. This would allow us to collect tax on everyone within that fire service area. Unionville, Fairview, Providence, and Bakers would change from a fee to a tax district. And again, the goal is for this to go into effect July 1, 2020. Chief Blath is here to talk a little bit about a more regional approach to this. Chief Blath, Chief Porter, and Chief Honeycutt with Bakers, they have talked about the possibility of forming a unified funding district. So, what this would do is it would take all three service, funding areas right now, combine them, and you'd levy one tax rate for that entire area. So, almost every single one of your residents would pay the same tax rate as Stallings, as Lake Park, as Hemby Bridge. There's some, there's some benefits to this. Bakers has two service areas that are not contiguous to one another. Establishing a service district that is not contiguous to one another presents some challenges. Junior Honeycutt would have to keep different budgets for each service areas. By doing this, it eliminates that problem. It also lets the fire departments to start sharing resources. There's a law that says if you collect a fire tax, it has to stay within that district. So, if Johnny collects a dollar, it's got to stay in Hemby Bridge. This would allow them to start sharing resources, start sharing personnel. It would not amend fire service lines yet. So, from an insurance standpoint, they remain where they are, but from a funding standpoint, it would combine them. Why does this make sense? It would, it would, or what does it do? It would maintain current response areas. It would allow departments to share resources. It, it's easier to explain to citizens that everyone in Indian Trail is paying the same tax rate for the same level of service, and it would allow us to strategically look at these service lines moving forward and change them as, as needed. There's probably no reason that the Fairview Fire District should have the town of Indian Trail in it. It should be in this consolidated district. There's no reason that that one parcel in Unionville should be in the Unionville Fire District. It should be in the consolidated district. So, this is a first step to a much larger conversation about shared fire service in Western Union County. So, I've talked for a while. I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Blath, but I can answer any questions.
I do have, I do have some, and I think they are the council members, so if you want to start from the right and go left.
Explain. Excuse me. Explain the vast majority of Indian Trail residents would pay the same fire tax rate.
So, right now, you have three main districts. You have Bakers, Hemby Bridge, and Stallings. All three of those are set at different tax rates. It's a level, it's a product of that value in that district and the department's budget. This would levelize the three tax rates into one unified tax rate. So, it, especially in Hemby Bridge and Stallings, it would, it would take all those people, some that are living right next door to each other, and levelize that tax rate, so they'd be paying the same thing.
Okay.
I'm good. I've been keeping up with...
So, what you're saying is, I pay a flat fee, and you want me to pay a higher tax, so the money will go to rural people?
The, so the only, the only Indian Trail residents that are paying a fee right now are, is in that Providence Rural, but yes, the county...
I'm in Bakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. So, Bakers would go from a fee to a tax. They would be subsidized at 20%. Bakers has been subsidized from the county before, though.
But I would pay a higher tax, but not get any more service?
Not necessarily. There's a break-even point depending on what the tax rate is. So, there's a lot of people that'll pay less. Currently in Bakers, for example, someone that has a $600,000 mansion is paying the same as someone that has a $60,000 single wide. So, there's not a lot of equity in that. Under a taxing model, it would be based on the value. So, not, businesses would probably pay more, but depending on the value of your home, depends on if you would pay more as a resident.
But if you're going from certain districts paying a fee up to a percentage, basically you're bringing in more money from our area. So, my question is, do we get more service and equipment for our money? That's what I haven't heard. That's what, that's the question.
Well, and I think this would allow us to look at fire service in these three areas much more strategically than we have in the past. Bakers specifically, we haven't been able to raise the additional revenue to help fund full-time people, to help fund additional stations, to help fund additional apparatus. Moving forward, it, we've been dealing this...
I understand my point. That's to every citizen. If I'm going to pay more, I want to know if I'm getting more.
Well, you're also getting the subsidy that you haven't been getting in the past. Bakers is a little bit different, but Hemby Bridge and Stallings have been paying 100% of the cost, plus they've been paying the county-wide fire. So, under this new model, you'd be getting a 20% subsidy from the county that you have not been getting in the past. But yes, the county-wide tax rate would go up marginally. I think it's about two-tenths of a cent to help fund those additional subsidies in the rural areas.
I'm just making sure, since I'm now a town boy, used to be a country boy, I want to make sure I'm getting the same benefits as the country boy.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Ms. Howe, questions?
What about the equipment as far as, you know, we were looking at apartments and townhouses, and they're, they're getting higher and higher in height. How, how is that going to affect trucks that we don't have, with the ladders that are unable to reach the fourth or fifth floor?
I'm hearing in my ear that I should defer that to Johnny, so he can talk more about the fire response than, than I could.
All right. I have a couple of questions. So, when this was first presented to us, it was presented as essentially our rates would stay the same, the people who pay the fees would now pay a tax, right?
Yes.
Now, this is a late-minute addition where we're talking about combining this into one district, right? All the three into one.
It is.
So, I have always been paying a tax, both on my house and cars. I mean, it's part of what we do. But if you combined this into three, sorry, three into one...
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that, and, and because I looked at the start of the presentation, it says that in the 2019, 2020 budget, that's when the rate would be set by the county. So, are you telling me that we agreeing to this means that there is a potential for a tax increase for the people who are currently paying the fire tax?
So, the, the fire tax is a product of the department's budget. So, if the department's budget is higher this year, and the county board supports that, then yes, that fire tax could raise, but it, it's the potential to do that every year.
Right, but, but, but I understand, but my question is, is really, there are three rates for the three different groups, the three different, the three, the three different fire districts. There are three different rates, right?
Yes, sir.
Right now.
Well, there's, there's two really because Bakers is a fee district.
Okay. Well, let's just talk about the two. Which one do we get? In other words, if, if a citizen comes up and asks me, "Why did you vote for this?" or "Why is this presented?" Am I going to get a tax increase? Because we are combining the three. I mean, that's something that I want to be able to, to respond to, because I'm concerned that recently, and then this doesn't tie into the fire, but just recently, we all in the county got a 30% increase in our water bill, and now we're talking about fire taxes. I am not against funding fire. I mean, I support that for whatever service they provide to us. We definitely need it. But the thing is, my concern arises from a potential tax increase, because I don't want people paying more taxes than they have to.
Sure.
I also don't want them getting less service than they have to. But you kind of understand my question in that, of the two, which one am I going to get? Am I going to stay the same? Is my current tax? I mean, I'm just using me as a hypothetical, not necessarily saying me, but the average citizen, that's probably one of the things they're wondering. I understand the move from the fire fee to the fire tax. That I understand. But then a second question on that is that we've been, Hemby Bridge Fire District, which is where I am, has been paying, been self-funded 100%.
Yes.
Is the 20% that the county's going to give as a contribution, does that mean that they're going to lower my taxes because we're getting 20% now?
Again, potentially. It depends on what the fire department requests. If the budget were to stay the same, yes, but we know there are needs in the fire departments that haven't been met over the years.
I have some questions for Johnny then.
Yes, sir.
I could probably answer this better than him. You got him on the seat, dog. I was going to let him stay as long as you held him.
Yes, sir.
Can I go? It's okay if I ask, or you want to start this way?
Go ahead.
So Mr. Blythe, thank you for coming. Mr. Linnell, I appreciate this. We wanted to really get you here to, to talk. So please, my questions are not, I just have to ask, right? Chief, are we looking at a potential increase in the budget? Or are we looking at a potential increase in the tax rate? Because we have Stallings and Indian Trail, because Stallings is a tax district, right?
Correct.
Bakers is a fee.
That's correct.
So we have Stallings and Indian Trail. Are they, their tax rates, which one's higher? Indian Trail's lower, or?
Stallings Fire Department's just a tick higher.
Just a tick higher?
Yep.
All right.
So, so you asked a question about, am I going to pay more, am I going to pay less? How does this affect if we combine these three? So the reality of this is, he talked about the rural fire districts paying 12 cent, and that was going to be entirely too much. So what's going to happen here moving forward if we don't combine these fire districts, okay, to work through the economy of scales? All right? You're going to see 12 cent fire tax in Hemby Bridge Fire District, in Stallings Fire District, whenever the time starts that we're starting to put on full-time people, because the economy of scales is so, so different. So combined, it's about $7.7 billion base. So whenever you throw those numbers at, at that 7.7 billion base, it cuts into that tax rate pretty hefty. So for an example, if, if we hired full-time people today and, and stationed them at those three stations that would be in that combined district, you're probably looking at a 10-cent tax rate, okay, on that combined district, not including whatever the 20% is. So that 20% then would come off however they're going to apply that. Okay? So that potentially could be an 8 cent tax rate, where now you're paying five and five and a half. Okay? So, so with that, with that being said, if Hemby Bridge went out, which is the biggest base out of those three, we went out and we hired four people, okay, our rate would be 12 cent.
But then if you hired four people within the combined group, you're saying it would be lower?
It would be lower because of the economies of scale. The, the deal about the combined thing, okay, my, my opinion about the combined thing is it's a good thing. A, it gets the neighbors across the street from one another, everybody in the town Indian Trail would then pay the same rate. I don't, I, I don't know how they wouldn't pay the same rate with the exception of the two parcels in Unionville's district and the one parcel in the Fairview District. When the district lines were redrawn, they could be brought into the town Indian Trail, brought into that funding district. They're already in the town Indian Trail, brought into the funding district. Everybody in Indian Trail then would pay the same rate, and in theory, get the same level of service. Obviously, some people live further from the fire station, further from the fire hydrant, so the level of service, when I talk about level of service, I'm talking about the number of responders, the number of apparatus. Ms. Howell talked about, you know, the, the buildings are getting bigger, what kind of trucks do we need? All of those things then can be worked out so that those resources are shared versus duplicated.
All right, I'm going to ask you one last question before I pass it on. Right now, we pay 5 point something cents, you say?
4.8.
4.8, but then.
You do.
Yeah, me.
Yep.
But then with this new proposal, it would go up?
Yes, it will go up. It will, it will go up, and I can tell you off the top, just based off of this slide right here, it's going to go up on the countywide side right off the bat. So it's going up from 133 to 158 is what your projection is?
And again, these are hypothetical if they were in place today. I, I know what Johnny's saying. It is not necessarily the case that they will go up. They probably will, but the Board of County Commissioners has to adopt these rates. Johnny doesn't, I don't. So it's got to go through a review on the county management and then the Board of County Commissioners. So it's whatever rate the Board of County Commissioners wants to set ultimately.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Yeah, and so ultimately, the way that shakes out, Mr. McIntyre, just so we're clear on that, our district rate could change, and the countywide rate could change, so your combined taxes would change. So either or, you know what I'm saying? So you got two opportunities there to get that increase. And they're getting the 20% and the 40% come out of that countywide rate, which, again, you're currently paying, and we get nothing for.
Who else had the question that Johnny was?
Ms. Howell had a question for Mr. Blythe.
The apparatus for the large buildings.
Yeah, he's ducking that question.
They're nice, though. Actually, actually, we currently have, in those, i- i- in the town, Stallings Fire Department has a ladder, and Hemby Bridge has a ladder. Both are 100 foot. So we currently have the apparatus we need, we just don't have the people in the seats on those apparatus. So that's the biggest issue facing fire, fire departments on the western side is people and, and how that works. And that's a, that's a grand explanation of how we do it now and where we need to get to. Be happy to do that at some point, but I'm sure y'all don't want me to bore you with that tonight.
I have, I have no further questions.
That's good information for tonight, for everyone to digest.
Well, I do have a question for Mr. Neil, Mr. Nylund.
Uh-oh, you're back on the hot seat.
So based on what you presented tonight, sir, I know that there's going to be some action required of us.
Yes.
Right? So can you just brief the council on kind of what the next steps are?
Sure.
I mean, we're going to need a little time to discuss and, and kind of digest this a little bit.
So the municipal approval process still has to happen no matter what. What we're going to be asking from you is either to approve the individual districts or approve the combined district. We presented, both of Johnny and I present, presented at Stallings last night, and they were okay with either model. I think they would, based on what I heard, they prefer the regional model, but if, if, and I, and I told them that if Indian Trail didn't go along with the regional model, the only choice would be the individual districts at that point. I, I think the way I look at this is a little more holistically. It moves this whole fire funding discussion in the right direction, and it gets us, not necessarily talking about the funding, but the actual fire service, which is really what's gotten lost in the last 10, 15 years when we start talking about fire funding. So we get this hurdle out of the way, and either way, we can, we can make it work. We just, personally, I think the regional model makes a lot of sense.
The, one of the concerns I have for the, the move from the fee to the tax.
Yes, sir.
Is the communication. How we communicate, meaning when I say we, meaning the county, the effective communication with the people that are going to be affected. There are some people who live in this fire fee areas who are on fixed incomes.
Yes.
And I would hope that the county would make some provision to assist some of those people, because the thing is, when you go from a fee to a hundred dollars versus, you know, 200, 300, for some of, of the people in these areas, it does, it, it is a significant increase in their budget expense, you know, all their expenses.
It absolutely could be.
So it's something that I would really, you know, impress upon the county to consider in terms of the communication, but also a fund setup to assist some of the people who may not necessarily be able to afford it.
Yes, sir. And I will pass that along. I will say that recently, I presented to the town of Marshville, and 70% of their citizens will pay less under the tax than the fee, based on the value of their homes. So I can, I can certainly run those numbers for the town of Indian Trail, but there are a number of people that need help the most that will pay less based on the value.
All right.
Thank you.
So, so just to kind of wrap up, I know you all need some time. I know this was the first time you had heard most of this. The problem is, we're bumping up against some statutory requirements to advertise. So just trying to get a sense of additional information you may need or a potential timeline for taking action.
February 11th? Put it on the next meeting?
Sure.
We'll put it on the next meeting for February 11th, and then in between, council will communicate to the town clerk through the attorney.
So you, so you'll be in touch with Ms., I guess he'll be in touch with Ms. Quinn to kind of drop whatever.
Right, yeah, I was, will the county provide a proposed resolution? Is that?
So the one in front of you is for the individual.
Right.
We are working on a combined resolution that would, that would be to combine all three of those districts.
Perfect, and we can expect that. And just to clarify, the, what, what we, what this town has to approve is the changes to the district, and so it's the changing the fee districts to, that are in town, to the tax district, and then potentially changing the individual districts into a regional district.
Essentially, yes. What you're really doing is giving the county the ability to fund fire service by doing those steps. But yes, it just, it allows us to collect these rates from your citizens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
That brings us to council access to town hall policy. Karen, you have that put together? Has that been, has that, that's been distributed to council for review?
That's right, I have distributed for review.
Everyone should have received a copy. Is there any discussion on the matter? Is council ready to make them, make a vote or action?
Yep.
Do I have a motion for or against?
I'll make a motion to adopt the council access to town hall policy as was drafted and distributed to the council.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
That was easy.
Adam, you have a cost estimate information for us for ADA accessibility? This is for information only, no action required.
Hello, Mayor and council. Hope you all are good tonight. Yeah, I think I picked up the wrong paper. I think about two weeks ago or so, y'all received an email that had a rough estimate for what ADA push-button access would be for the front door of the building. Since then, I've done a little bit more research, gone back and called the architect for the building to see what requirements were there or weren't there. So when the building was built, and even still today, push-button access is not required by North Carolina Building Code. It is doable, you can do it if you want to, but there's like five requirements, you have to have to be ADA accessible. That's how hard the door is to push or pull, that's the height of the handles, that's different things like that. So they never designed this building to have push-button access. It wasn't a requirement, and they weren't told to do that by previous people that sat in the chair that, that dictated to them what to design the building to be. So the estimate that we did ourselves, just by looking on the internet and knowing what general costs are, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 45-ish thousand dollars. Now, that number could be really high, or it could be really low. I haven't gone out and gotten a contractor to come in and actually tell me a cost. If that's the direction we want ahead, we are more than happy to do that. I just need to know what I need to do.
Would council like to direct them one way or the other? I just need a consensus.
And again, it is doable. You can do it. It's not that it can't be done, it's just we don't, it wasn't originally designed to do that. And I wasn't involved in that part of the design of the building, so.
It, you could do this video, it's not going to cost you more to find out how much it costs, right?
It's just going to, I got to get a contractor that'll actually come here and write it down on a piece of paper and tell me how much it'll cost.
I mean, council, would you guys be okay with just, I, I mean?
We ought to be able to at least get a cost.
Yeah, we should get a cost, yeah.
Yeah.
Thumbs up, thumbs up.
I think so, and plus then we'll have a number for our budget and.
That was going to be my other thing is, now, obviously Jim can tell you, he could, as he, I'll use his words that he usually uses, will find the money. I can tell you on the budget line items that I have, I don't have $50,000 sitting in, in a line item to go out and do a project. So if we wanted to do it sooner than July, Jim would have to find $50,000 or whatever it ends up being. But I will call a contractor, come in and give us a number.
Personal check?
So, Mr. Mayor, you're going to?
Yeah, well, it looks like council's okay directing you to get a actual written estimate from a contractor.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wadowicz, you're up for a year-to-date financials. You've got 30 seconds.
Is that Red Bull, Jim? Is that Red Bull?
This also is for information.
Can you make that any bigger or no?
No, it's bigger on their screens. They can actually see it.
Okay. Good evening. It's good to be before you. I briefly make an update. We're at the halfway point, so the results tonight are based on six months. My police report that the town finances are in positive territory as we hit the halfway point. What I'm going to walk you through first is the revenues and, as they compare to the budget. So maybe I'll walk up here a little. Is this okay, Adam? I'm still on TV? Okay. So basically, as you see, I'm going to go over some of the major generators. The first two, the ad valorem tax and a motor vehicle tax, we budgeted this at 96%. It's a conservative method. It was here when I got here. I think it's a great idea. And last year, we collected it 99.84%. So basically, I'm projecting that we're going to build a $300,000 surplus there in those top two categories. The next major revenue source is sales tax. We're running about 6% ahead. We're going to hit our budget in April, so I'm projecting May and June will be surplus monies in the sales tax. Investment earnings, again, everything's good there. Interest rates are down a little bit, but our balances are growing. So we're still hitting about 40,000 a month there, which is, I still don't know how that happened, but, so all positive. So what I want to mention in that variance column. Adam, can you get me back to that?
I did it.
This column right here, I professionally, I professionally took the liberty to estimate what will be at the end of the year. So the only, the only anticipated shortfall we have is the ABC distribution. Now, this is an interesting story. Things were going great there, we made this budget, but they have a new strategy now. They want to build a second store, and instead of making the distributions as healthy as they were, they want to keep that money, the theory being that they'll, they'll mortgage less when they build a new store, and that someday when that new store is in effect, we'll have two stores going, we'll make that money back in a couple of years. Everyone else is either going to be, based on my professional judgment, will attain budget or will be above budget. So through six months, we've attained 72.9% of our budget. Ms. Shirley?
The, the money that they were giving us or sending to us, and they've changed their mind and they don't want to do this anymore?
Right, they're now giving us less because they want to hold on to the money, because they're, they're in process of a new store coming on board.
Can they do that without our permission?
Yes. There's a.
Yes.
It's governed by the state.
Yes.
Yes, they can.
There's a minimal that they have to give us, and, and which we're doing, we're, you know, we were insisting they give us more, but there is a minimal that they can give us. It's a good question. So basically, everything else is on budget. I'm happy to report about the revenues.
One, one second before you go further.
Yes, sir.
Quick question for you. The ad valorem tax, we're above what we expected to come in? Because we're, we adopted a budget of 6.3. Is that 6.3 through half of the year, or that's the total for the year?
That's the annual, that first column is the annual budget. That's what we adopted.
Okay, so, so great.
So we've already exceeded, Marcus, that's right, because again, we, we tax the people we taxed the people at a hundred percent, but we only budgeted ninety-six percent. And we're collecting ninety-nine point eight-four. And January through January, this isn't, January isn't in there, and we got quite a bit in January because the due date was January 5th.
So my question is that, in your comments, you're saying that budgeted at ninety-six, we bill at a hundred, and the plus three hundred K is that you expect to come in at about six point seven million dollars?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
But then you mentioned also sales tax, you're saying that, so these figures really represent till the end of, what, December or the end of November? Because if I look at sales tax down there, we had two point two, but we had one point oh six, which means that...
One point oh six through five months.
Okay, so this is five months of data.
That's five months. Sales tax is always two months behind for Union County.
Okay.
So that's five months in the bank, and I'm saying we're six months ahead of what we were of our budget. That number's gonna come in about two point five, Marcus.
Okay.
Based on my professional judgment.
All right.
Can you guys hear me? You stayed around, you may as well. So next, I'm gonna take you through the appropriation side of the calculations. Just to set the stage a little bit, some of our expenses have been annual expenses. For example, our insurance, we paid a hundred percent. Our insurance was for the workers' comp, that's about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's already in column two, the actual appropriation. We also have the election expenses, for example. Thirty-one thousand dollars we paid, that's already in. So there's some expenses that are annualized. Okay, so let's go through, again, I believe every budget here. Let me go through a couple of major ones. Some highlights on the national election in two thousand twenty, we will not have to budget next year. There's no local election, so we save thirty-one thousand right off the top. That's a good thing. Now, the water, Marcus mentioned that. Union County is increasing the water and sewer rates fifteen point five tomorrow, and then another fifteen point five in January. So that's thirty-one percent. I've asked Adam to tell me what impact. That's gonna cost us about twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're gonna lose that positive election expense. We allocated, the next screen. The only budget that we're gonna be over on a little bit, need a little bit of a boost, will be our legal cost. We budgeted fifty thousand, we've had thirty-five thousand through half the year. But again, everything else, I'm projecting will either attain budget or be positive. I wanna show you the debt service, this one right here, debt service advanced payment. We had budgeted three hundred fifteen thousand, we were gonna pay off, we have a loan out with Crooked Creek, and we're gonna pay it off three years early. So that's, we'll do that in June if the strategy remains the same. Sanitation, Adam is staying on top of that, it's been a lot going on, but again, he had a good budget, we're gonna make that budget. Contingency, this is something I brought with me from Poughkeepsie. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget, and we use it if we need it. I mean, we won't use it, we don't spend it unless we come to the council. We'll come to you, and we'll ask you, can we move some money? We did it for Christmas lights one year, something that wasn't in the budget. Grants we have, if we have to, a hundred twenty-five thousand, if we need it. So again, halfway through the year, we're at fifty-three percent, but it's better than that because, like I said, insurance has all been paid, a lot of annual expenses have been paid, so... Again, I'm I'm happy the way things have been through six months. And again, we use this now, we'll start our budget process, and this is the data I'll be giving to the folks to say, here's where we are halfway through the year, and it's a good starting point for the budget. And I told Michael I'd be less than twenty minutes, so... Any questions or...
Any questions for that? No, thank you, Jim.
Just one question, but it's an easy one. The three fifteen that we have for debt service advanced payment, council will instruct you in June whether or not we go with it based on our projections then. So we're doing nothing now.
Nothing until June, right?
Thank you.
We'll decide, that's what the due date is. And when I make the regular payment, and that's when you have to make these payments. It's the principal balance plus one percent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. That brings us to rules of procedure. Ms. Walter?
So, last meeting, we went over the proposed new set of rules of procedure for the town council. And the, I believe, I sent these out to you with the edits and the things we discussed at the last meeting, and this is up for your discussion and potential approval if you all are so inclined. Of note, there is a rule number three regarding remote participation. The council did pass a remote participation policy back in two thousand sixteen. We found that, Kathy and I found that, so that is done. The, it was passed, it personally went to the minutes, but it was never signed and stamped by the town. So that's a technicality, so we can go ahead and finish that off if you'd all like. I think Kathy, did you hand out the...
I did hand it out, but we were gonna discuss that on the February eleventh, but they have a copy, it's got the cover with the yellow highlight on it.
Excellent, okay, so just if you all wanna review that, we can go ahead and approve the regular rules today, and then you all can take the time to review the remote participation policy for the next meeting.
Okay, I'll need a motion. One ready?
Anybody have any questions?
Well, can you clarify the number three again? On the remote participation, are we saying that there is no remote?
Okay, so we do have, we have a policy in place that was, the minutes were, it was approved via the minutes, but the actual policy itself was never signed by the mayor. So it's, that's a technicality that we can fix because it was approved by council. This is the rules regarding calling into a regular meeting of the council. And so this, in the event you are out of town, or work, or, you know, for work or some emergency, that would give you the opportunity, and it gives you permission to call in twice a year and participate in a council meeting remotely.
Yes. High five.
That's okay, that's fine. This would be the, sorry, this would be the set of, the document that you all received on Sunday. For me, for review.
Okay, any other questions?
One other question.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, there was a discussion about possibly creating a committee to submit nominations in the event that a council person was to step down. I didn't see that in here, and I just wanna make sure that when I was reading, I didn't overlook it.
You did not, and what is in here, that was something we discussed, but that was not, I did not understand that that was a consensus of how the council would want to approach that topic. And so that would, that is rule... Give me a minute?
Thirty-eight, I believe.
Is it?
I think, but...
It probably, there's...
I got blurry-eyed at that point.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, rule thirty-eight B is the one we're discussing. And so what is in there currently is that the mayor shall open the floor for nominations, and council members may put forward and debate nominees. And so then you would vote until somebody, any nominees that were nominated, receive the majority vote. So that's what's in this current set of rules, and of course, happy to change that at your, as the council would, and again, these are your rules. And so you have the ability to change them as you would like with a two-thirds majority vote.
Would anyone like to discuss that one, or have any better idea, or a different idea than that? And where I was going with this is, it was a thought I had. Perhaps, instead of making it wide open to nominate whomever, do we, could we limit it to those that ran for council? In the last election, or last two elections, or something? And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, one thing, and I'm not saying this council, but one thing that can happen with people is that they want to surround themselves with the same people that they like, or that think just like them, or whatever. And so you're leaving that decision to us five, whereas if a person was truly interested in running for council, they put in their fee to do so, and then you have people in the community that have actually voted for those folks. So I just wanted to bring that up, is that any consideration? There's a downside to that, too, because, you know, there's, there have been people that have run that may not necessarily be the person that I would want to choose necessarily. I'm just, but I wanted to bring both sides of that coin, at least to discuss.
I thought it was the best process the councils use, since I've seen, living here in Indian Trail, is putting out a start date and an end date to accept any resident that wishes to apply for the position, fill out a one-page intention and application, submit that, and then come in for a special meeting, just for interviews. And then council has a grading system to choose from there, and which is then turned over to the attorney to, it's a point system.
What? Yes, you used to do that, that's why I brought it up, yes. And that was very, that was very fair, that was very private for each council member. And it gave the opportunity for those that actually ran for election, if they were still interested, to re-sign up and do it.
So, my own thing is, I think you kinda answered the question yourself, Mr. Morse, when you said there are some people who may have run that you may not necessarily wanna see on council, but there are some people who ran that you'd probably like to see. So if we, I think if we leave it open, we can cast a wider net. And by that, I mean, there may be some people who didn't run for town council, or who probably are, or probably would be good on council. And I would not want to pigeonhole us into that box where we can't really choose somebody because this rule exists. I think maybe it would be wise for maybe putting some furbage in there to say something along the lines of, you know, consider people who ran for office, even if they didn't get in, make that one of the considerations. Sort of like the Rooney Rule in the NFL, where, you know, you get what I'm saying? But not to limit it, because the thing is, if only three people ran in an election, and three got on, and then one is resigning, who do you get? Because that rule exists. You may not necessarily have a like six or more, or, you know, more than the amount getting in, running for office. That situation can probably present itself where you only have three running, and there are three spots, they all got on, and then for some reason, there's a vacancy, and then who do you choose because nobody else ran? I'm just, that's just one of the things I was throwing up.
I wouldn't wanna limit it to people that just ran, because sometimes it's not a lot of people run, so it's extremely limited. And some of them get so few votes, most people probably wouldn't want them up here anyway.
Well, I think, to Marcus's point, you know, he's included that in there, okay? You have that group that ran.
I just shouldn't leave it out.
And then you also have additional additional candidates, so...
I don't, I don't see an issue with the way the town used to run it, just put a public notice out there on the websites and in the newspaper that a council member resigned, and from April first to April thirtieth, they'll be accepting applications, interviews to be conducted, May fifteenth.
I just shouldn't leave it as it is.
I mean, what was it, that one year, there was like eleven people, right?
If they, if they ran, and they still wanna...
When Roger Stanton got appointed. No, 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 when, I remember it because it was like, they put people in a different room that weren't interviewed, brought one in at a time.
Including people that didn't win kinda defeats, if you limit it to those, that kinda defeats the purpose of a democracy. Because they didn't win. I just shouldn't leave it like it is.
All right, council?
Just so, again, not that I wanna, the alternative is, when and if the time comes that this does happen to apply, you all can make up a rule at that point in time, too. So, you know, you are the council, so you can, we can pass this as is tonight if you'd like, and then we, always knowing that this is amendable, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I guess the, the trying to find a way to maybe, I don't think you'll ever eliminate nepotism, but maybe discourage it. Hate to see a stacking the deck, so to say. But anyways, I just wanted to put that out there for us to think about before we proceed either path.
But I don't think we should hamstrung future councils, too, because if we pass that, that future councils may have to adhere to that, and there could come a possibility where we don't have somebody who ran, we only have, there's nobody out there that we can possibly choose, meaning that we then have to say, okay, well, here's the rule we put in, and there's nobody else, so what do we do? I mean, right now, well, first of all, I think you made a really good choice, I just happened to run that time when you guys nominated me, so... I just wanna mention that, by the way.
And I think that if council would have voted on that, you know, with the other candidates, it would have still, you know, limited to that pool.
Well, I take comfort in knowing that, I'm really happy with that.
So anyways, you know, I have more faith in the voters sometimes than I do in ourselves, that's all. And to that point, if you did have a limited pool, you know, yes, you could be, let's just say there was only one other candidate, and, but, how, and I'm trying to be very diplomatic about this, how, how much damage can that one candidate do to the council?
Well, I can name people throughout history how much damage one person has done.
And if you didn't have any additional people running, let's just say only three people ran and three people were elected, then have a, you know, a contingency to then open it up to whatever. I just wanted to throw that out there and...
As Karen said, this policy is amendable with each, unfortunately, with each resignation for council to change. You could have one resignation on Monday, hold it one way, then council changes the policy on Tuesday for the person that resigns on Wednesday. It's totally up to the people that are sitting up here, so as long as you're up here, you know you hold yourself to a higher standard.
I think we would have to get, I don't think we would be blinded, I think we would have to get consensus on a person, it should, should a vacancy exist, on who that person, you know, should be that we would nominate. I think, this council has worked well, even if it's new, I think it's worked well in the past two years that I've been here, two years plus. So I think that we would be able to get a consensus, a consensus candidate, such as myself. I'm just, Jerry, I'm just joking, but...
No, we're good, we're good. Thanks for the clarification about the, you know, setting up a committee to put forth nominations. I did not like that idea so much as I do with the, us just putting them out there, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Unless if there are any questions from anybody else. So I'd like to make a motion that the town council of Indian Trail adopt the rules of procedure with the intent of rule number three being revisited at a future meeting for consideration and adoption.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the last item is real quick from me. It's strategic planning, we still have a budget coming up. And this is not for discussion tonight, just something if you wouldn't mind sending over to Kathy in the near future. I think that picking, it's traditionally been done on a Saturday morning, picking a day in late March and a day in late April would be good times for these sessions, giving the town staff the month of May for anything, anything that might come up, that's, instead of rushing them through June to get it done, as historically, we've done a lot in the past. And we're rushing down to the wire. So I'm just throwing that out there, if you're okay with that, just get some dates over to Kathy and let her, yes, Mike?
I would just ask, Jim, does those dates sound workable for you? Okay.
There is one date that's not good for me, just on record for y'all to know.
Send an email, let her know the dates you're available and not, and she'll get it from all of us, and she'll circle the ones that are, yeah. If you need help with that, I'm pretty good at those kind of puzzles. All right, thank you. That brings us to new business, so Citizen of the Quarter nominations for fourth quarter for the end of last year. I have one nomination, and that's that young man, Joe Brundrette, that came forth and was, had the honor of having the cover of the first Indian Trail Weekly for helping thirty-eight families whose mothers were suffering from cancer and providing them with enough gifts for their parents so she can rest. I'd like to throw his nomination out there to the council, if there's any other nominations, speak now.
What's his name?
Joe Brundrette.
I nominate Joe.
If there's no, is there any other nominations? Oh, go ahead. Todd nominates Joe. All in favor? Make that unanimous. Can you contact him? Okay.
That's Hollywood Joe.
Hollywood Joe. All right. No, not Little Joe. No, we didn't just nominate a ferret.
No, he's not a good candidate.
All right, request for three additional part-time employees for Parks and Rec, Mr. Kramer?
Good evening again, I hope everyone's night has gotten better since I was last up here. Just very, very simply, you know, I believe that the town and the parking rec department prides itself on customer service and a high level of service to anyone using the facilities. With the addition of new amenities, additional, you know, turf field and shelters and things of that nature... of that nature, we believe it is in our best interest to add three additional part-time staff to the org chart. Major thing to point out here, this does not change the bottom line at all. We're not asking for a dollar change in the budget. It is merely a stopgap measure. This makes our lives a lot easier to schedule staff, to make sure that the tournaments are running smoothly, events are running smoothly when there are meetings like this and rentals in the building, that that is staffed at an adequate level. This will hopefully prevent staff burnout and reduce turnover between part-time staff.
Any questions for Mr. Kramer?
If I can add, just so you all understand why this is before you, as it really doesn't kind of feel like it needs to be, this is a request to change the organizational chart to add boxes to the chart, and that is council's prerogative to approve that or not. And since there's no budget change, this, again, this is up to y'all just to say yes or no.
Okay, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve adding three temporary staff positions to the Parks and Rec Department.
Temporarily or part-time?
Additional part-time.
They're part-time.
Part-time.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Morse has made the motion to approve three additional slots for part-time employees in the Parks and Recs Department. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Karen, that brings us to your council comments. Oh, Adam? Oh, Adam's got us.
No, no, no.
What?
No. Let's go with council comments. I asked a question, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm behind my one job I have here. Ms. Howe?
How about that? Thank you, everybody, for the meeting tonight, and we've got a lot going on, and I hope we can continue and get anything that needs amended here in town done so that we can move on, because that's the only way we're gonna make progress. We've got a great, great amount of employees here, good guys, good girls, I should say women, excuse me. But be safe driving home, and thank you for all my good wishes that have been passed my way from my husband. I appreciate everybody. This is when you know who your friends are. Thank God. Okay.
Mr. Head?
Just wanna thank everybody for coming. Again, good meeting. It's always enjoyable that we all on the council get along extremely well, and we're all looking out for our constituents, our residents. With that, be safe, drive home carefully.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Staff, I wanna say to all of you that when we sit up here and we say that, we appreciate you. We really do appreciate you. This is a town of forty-something thousand people, largest in Union County, and you guys do a phenomenal job of taking care of our residents and also making us look good up here. So thank you, every one of you. Get home safe. Thanks.
Mr. Barber?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, everyone watching at home. I'd like to thank the town staff for the great job y'all are doing and the great Christmas parade. Thank you. I'd also like to give thoughts and prayers out to the family of Walton Johnson, who passed away recently here. Walton's a longtime resident of Indian Trail. He was a founder of the Lions Club. He served the Lions Club here for over fifty years. He owned a tax business here, Trail Realty. He was on the school board for eight years here. He was a deacon at his church, excellent family man, excellent community person. He was a veteran of the Air Force. He didn't stay in the Air Force because he said they sent him to Alaska. So, but the world was a better place because of Walton. He was an excellent human being, and he'll be missed, but now heaven is a better place because of him. Kudos to him and his family in prayers, and thank you, Walton. We'll miss you.
Malcolm?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you, staff. Kathy, thanks for picking up the ball and running with it for me. I appreciate you more than you know. Malcolm, thanks for standing in there tonight. We appreciate you. Jim, great job, as usual. And everyone, have a good night. God bless.
Andy, of course.
It was good seeing everyone tonight, and it's comforting knowing the town's in a really good financial position, good presentation. I just wanted to mention that we have, it's that time of year when committees and boards need to be populated with the residents, so there's quite a few openings, and I'm hoping that we'll have an avalanche of applications, because, you know, it just makes the town and our jobs easier and it makes the town better. Hope everyone has a great night, a good weekend, and see you next time.
At this time, I, we have a closed session, and that's for attorney-client privilege, correct? And for attorney-client privilege, any motion to go into closed session?
Still moved.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion. All in favor? Motion approved unanimously.
Make the motion to come out of closed session?
Mr. Head made the motion to come out of closed session. All in favor?
All right.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, what, show? Let us give this one to Shirley.
Yeah. Give me one more.
All those in favor? A motion to adjourn. Our meeting's adjourned.